Okay, we ready? Just want to welcome everybody to the Worcester School Committee meeting and we're gonna first, if you can, please stand for the pledge allegiance followed by the National Anthem which will be sung by the Rice Square School Chorus under the direction of Char Char May.
Aye, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in our nation, in the land of liberty and justice for all.
Oh, okay, go to the front?
Yep.
Okay.
But say so to the audience.
Great job.
Nice, nice job Rice Square Chorus, great job. Tell you're one of the best principals in the city, I said hi, Principal Doneo. Okay, we're gonna do the roll call.
Member Alvarez, here. Member Biancheria?
Here.
Member Benanda?
Here.
Member Guardiola?
Here.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Here.
Member Mailman?
Here.
Member McCullough?
Here.
Member Roy?
Here.
Mayor Petty?
Here.
Okay, we have item and student advisory committee items, do we have anything?
Yep, we do.
Did this introduce yourself, what school you from?
Of course, hi, my name is Mary Jane Batar. I am the ex-official member to the school committee, I'm a junior at Worcester Tech. And today, the item we have submitted states to enhance the role of guidance counselors by giving them opportunities to engage one-on-one with their students and prepare each individual for their plans beyond high school, whether it be through a college or another path. Allowing students to connect more with their guidance counselors will prevent bias or negativity between staffs and students and overall benefit the school environment. We submitted this item today because we believe recently there's been a lot of tension in a lot of high schools and we feel guidance counselors have been so busy that they haven't been able to connect with students one-on-one. We want to see if we can explore ways to relieve some of the stress on our guidance counselors and responsibilities as they are the people who guide the students from high school to college and entering high school. So, we'd like to just explore opportunities, see if we can find more time for guidance counselors to connect with their students, especially upperclassmen because towards the end of high school, they start to lose that relationship with their upperclassmen because there's so much going on. So, we just want to see and explore opportunities for this and yeah, that's what we have.
Good job. Okay, thank you, we'll send that to administration. Okay, opposed, in favor, opposed, so ordered. Next, we have the consent agenda, motion is to approve. Do a roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancheria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
What's that? Here. Okay, yes, okay. We are on... Recognitions, to recognize the 365Z Foundation for the Support and Providing Needs Service Dog that is being utilized at South High Community School. Honey's handler, Kristen Ford, is an educator of South and her family members are founding members of the 365Z. Come on, come on up right in front here and we have Ms. McCullough, just gonna say a few words.
Thank you and thank you so much to Kristen and Rosemary Ford for being here tonight. They are, family are the founding members of the 365Z Foundation which is a wonderful organization that does a lot around the commitment to kindness and just does many fabulous things within our community and throughout the Worcester Public Schools. And they provided the financial support in order for us to have Honey, the service dog, through the needs program where Kristen is a fabulous educator and she is the handler. So, Honey gets to be at South High and we are so appreciative to their family for their financial support and their continued support throughout the district, but also to Kristen and her family for hosting and handling Honey and having her at South High for us. So, thank you very much.
Excuse me. Member Biancheria?
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, a few weeks ago when I brought this item up to talk about the fact that we would like to see this type of dog at other high schools, I think will be extremely beneficial. I've heard nothing but fabulous news as far as how the dog has handled itself and how the students appreciate it, staff enjoys it. And it's amazing to me, the level of where pets and animals have brought people together over the last five to seven years. So, it certainly is something that has been extremely beneficial to South High, but I'm looking forward to having this move on to other sites also. So, thank you very much for your hard work and I certainly want to recognize Polakawa and our former chief of police Edgar Della for their work on this. I did speak at length with them on this subject and I feel as though we can work all together to have this take place at other sites in our schools. Thank you again.
Thank you. And just want to thank the 365Z Foundation and everything you've done for the city of Worcester and the community. And we have some citations we'd like to hand out. First is certificate of recognition presented to 365Z Foundation for the Support and Providing Needs Service Dog to the South High Community School students. Thank you for helping provide social emotional support to the Worcester Public Schools students. And this is signed by myself, the superintendent, and the Worcester School Committee. And this, I'll just hand this to you, Rosemary Ford. Worcester School Committee Certificate of Recognition presented to Honey for providing social emotional support to the South High Community School students. And we have one more to give out here. Worcester School Committee Certificate of Recognition presented to Kristen Ford for bringing Honey, a needs service dog, to the South High Community School students and providing them with social emotional support. Signed by myself, the superintendent, and the Worcester School Committee. Okay, our next one is to recognize the Worcester Tech North Boys Team for being Division Three Indoor State Championship Runner-Up. Come on in. Looks like I might be missing a bunch of them, but...
So, want to congratulate the Worcester Tech North High Boys Team for all of their success this year. In addition to being the Division Three Indoor State Championship Runner-Up, I believe they had several individual successes as a team, on the team as well. So, just really congratulations on all your hard work and for representing the Worcester Public Schools so well, thank you.
Figure I get the tallest one in front of me here. But just want to, again, congratulations, great job, coach. And so, we have some certificates we'd like to give out. Our first is to its reads in part, certificate of recognition presented to the Worcester Tech North High Boys Track Team placing second in MIAA Division Three Championship. And thank you for your leadership and dedication to the Worcester Public School students. And this goes to the coaches. Our first one is head coach Gerald Snay. And the other coaches, when I was with us tonight, it was Jim O'Keahy and also Coach John, is it Nicole? Then we have certificate of recognition to present it to the students who represent us so well in this MIAA Division Three Championship. So, our first one is, okay, here we go. Alvin Afry, is it Nick? Oh yeah, we can do that, okay.
So, over here to your right, we have Caden Gray. David Amamu. Donation Dernosi. Wellington Freeman. Josh Anno. Mahad Mohammed. Michael Maruku. Alex Cibre. Imani Guthrie. And state champion and national second place, Cyprian Ojatabu.
Open in. See, coach, see if there's any of you. They might, no, see if they're here, some of those, they might be on the line here. Again, congratulations all, you're gonna be running track this summer? Okay, congratulations.
Thank you, congratulations, congratulations.
Okay, good job. Okay. So, before we move on, I'm going back to student advisory. Ariana, you want to introduce yourself and what school you from?
Hello, my name is Ariana Costoso, I am a senior at South High.
Thank you. Okay, recognition, public comment. A person may speak for no more than two minutes on an item appearing on the agenda. And just your name, see your residence and the item number.
Okay, hi, good evening, my name is Melissa Verdiar, I'm a Worcester resident and I am the president of the Educational Association of Worcester. So, good evening Mayor Petty, Superintendent Menares, and the school committee members. I came tonight to speak on two specific items, 440 and 443. So, the reason I wanted to speak on these two items tonight is because the Worcester Public Schools Administration and the Educational Association of Worcester have agreed to a process for the way that we handle our business and there are specific things that we work on with administration and we work on these things to try and reach an agreement or to finish things to fruition. When that can't happen, you may see these things come to school committee at executive session. So, executive session would be the time that the EAW would bring anything forward that we have not been able to handle with administration and that's when the school committee would have privy to that, that kind of information and those kinds of situations. So, I say that because there are a couple of things here that, as I said, we agreed to a process between the administration and the union. And we agree to collaborate and work on things and try to solve issues before they become grievances, that's been the whole goal since I became president in July of '22. And so, I just wanted to say that as far as I saw the Chapter 74 for the Comprehensive High School come up on the agenda, this is something that Dr. Koo and I have started working on last year and we continue to work on. It is a very daunting process and it's been hard to find times that we can all meet with all of those Chapter 74 members and with administration and the EAW. So, that is something that we have been working on, so I just wanted to bring it out since I saw it on the agenda, that it is something that the union and the administration continues to work on. So, I, as I said, I wanted to make that clear. There's another item, 443, that talks about people on paid administrative leave. As a union president, I find it really important to make sure that people's personal information and any kind of issues that are happening with administration as a personnel issue, for those things to remain private. And based on some of the asks of that, it really becomes, it becomes like, it feels like we're putting people's personal information out there. When you're talking about listing job titles, it's very, it's very easy to deduct who is who. And you know, I don't think, as much as I appreciate and as a taxpayer, knowing how many people we have out on paid leave, I do not think it's important to know the job titles per se. This is a sticky situation and it's not something I want to see come onto the school committee floor. So, I did want to take a time to address that and say that as much as we enjoy working with the school committee, we really are trying to solve things without having to bring it to your level, you have enough to work on, that if we can solve things between the administration and the EAW, that we're going to do that and we'll continue to do that work. So, I wanted to come and address everyone tonight and just let you know where we're at.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience who'd like to speak? Give your name, see your residence, and item number?
Yes, of course, Fred Nathan Worcester. Three items and I'm gonna go real quick for you. First one, it was nice to see the 365Z get honored, they've done such an incredible job. Number two, I don't know what number it is, but the electric buses. The WRTA had electric buses and you know what? They don't now. They have not had them, I don't know, three years maybe? It kind of went like the dinosaur, it died off. To think that, you're actually thinking of doing electric buses here to transport the children to the schools? I don't know. Next one is 4-42. The whole idea of you guys and girls... The whole idea of you guys and girls having the phones or tablets or what have you, I can understand if you have family, you need to stay in contact, but that would be the only reason you would have that open. It's always amazed me that all of the politicians want respect, but when you're looking at your cellphone or tablet or what have you, you're showing no respect to the public.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience like to speak? Just come up to the microphone, give your name, see your residence and the item number you'd like to speak on. Sir, if you want to come up too next then...
Brian Stacy Worcester. I have two books for Superintendent Menares. I have Worcester, City of Worcester, 300 Years. I have Worcester Stacks Up, First and Fun Facts. Now, remember, Gariola is my, you're my representative. Could we ask him, Alex, to give these books to the superintendent?
Sure, we can do that, yep. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and board members, my name is Paul Poppenchak, I live at 34 Midland Street. And I'm a husband and a father and a grandfather. And I had two granddaughters in the Worcester School. And I remember the first time I went to one of the concerts at South High, it was like being in the United Nations. And I loved the fact that our city is so welcoming to folks from all over the world and it's added, that diversity has added great benefit to our community. I want to come, I want to talk about the lunch survey that was done by the students from Forest Grove. It was interesting to me to see how, how really professionally this was done. They, they, they created the poll and they looked at options and asked open-ended questions so that the students could respond freely. They talked about important aspects of the lunch program, if they felt they were nutritionally enough. They showed great empathy by showing that, by acknowledging that 71% of the students in Worcester come from low-income homes. And that they rely on the breakfast and lunch from school often for their daily meals. And that the importance of making these meals nutritious will help them in their learning because it's so important to have a full stomach if you're trying to learn. They attained comments from more than 50% of the students, which is much better than we, the citizens, did in voting every year. And finally, they talked about the importance that the students have to stay awake and to take full benefit of their classes. I'm a member of 350 Central Mass, which is an environmental committee organization. And I'm also a member of the Worcester NAACP. And Dr. Monorez came to our March meeting and talked about her goals for the year. And her goals for a child, her shared vision of a learner as being a problem solver, a curious learner, empowered individual, effective communicator, and engaged community member. Now, I know I'm going to do a disservice here, but I just want to acknowledge that Ijira, Avital, Avery, and Lorelei, in my opinion, did a fantastic job in soliciting this information and taking it upon themselves. And they seem to be touching all the goals that Dr. Monorez has set. So I just want to say thank you and acknowledge the great work that the school system is doing.
Thank you. That's a pack truck, the girls, I think they're right behind in front of you. They're right there in front of you. Okay. Anybody else in from the audience? Okay, come on up. Give your name, see your residence and topic you want to discuss, item number on the calendar.
Hi, good evening, I want to speak about item K. My name is Elizabeth Frontang, my son goes to the Academic Center for Transition. I just want to say that all children deserve to be included and feel welcome in schools, regardless if they have a disability or an IEP. My son, he has been suspended 20 times when he was attending the Roosevelt School, which led to me being fired from my job. Suspending and excluding kids from school or having access to a full day of school, it's not safety. Autistic kids, Latino kids, black kids, everyone deserves access to a good education. We need to do better, thank you.
Thank you. Give your name, city of residence and item number.
My name is Anne Hingigidoo, I'm a parent at Worcester Public School. I have two children. One has speech delay and he has been in the preschool for the last two years. So I want to talk on item K, the climate around the school. It's important for my child to feel welcome, not only that because he has speech delay but also he is of, black, he's black. So I, I feel like he, he will do better if we have the climate in school inclusive of all children, no matter whether they are able to communicate or be able to say where they are coming from, all that, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Give your name, see your residence and item number.
My name is Julie, I'm from the Piedmont area. And I have two kids that go to Jacob Hyatt. And sometimes the kids have behavior issues, but they don't need to be suspended. They just need more extra help, extra support. So we need to do better and continue the diversity and not suspend kids. And that is for item K.
Thank you. So we have one person who was calling in, I'm sorry, someone else going to speak? Give your name and item number you want to speak on? Your name and the item number?
Ruth Fabregas Fay. I was a bilingual teacher at Charlie Manning. And I just want to share, I've shared this with you before, is that the Worcester State University and the Gaston Institute did a research in Worcester in how the Latino students are suspended 85% higher than white students for doing similar infraction. And we had a principal, one day had a young teacher come to her with a list of four names of students that she wanted to suspend because she said the students were not complying with the discipline policy that you cannot have a phone on your desk. But when the principal went down to read the four students and she looked around, all the white students had their phone, none of them were on the list. We need to understand that a soulmate of protectors have been addressing this committee. Let's try to treat, treat every student with the same love and humanity that we treat all the students. Our children need... Let me tell you, when we see what's happening, the dropout rate for Latino students is so high. But it's not because they are not able to do the work, it's how they're being treated. So I pray that you would consider, let's sit down and talk how we can reach out to our children.
Thank you. Give your name, see your residence, you can say see your residence.
Hi, I'm Maria Juncos, I'm the executive director, the new executive director of the Latino Education Institute here in Worcester. Not that new because kind of a year and a half. But I just want to say that hearing you and everything right now, I know that almost half of the population in Worcester Public Schools are Latinos. So I mean, that change is, the demographic is changing. So we have to look at that fact and we have to work around and be more inclusive from the Latino Education Institute perspective. I was reading carefully the strategic plan, the new strategic plan of Worcester Public Schools. And I have to tell you it's excellent in terms of how you can see the different type of students and the complexity in between them, especially for example, English learners. Those that have English as a second language because in their families are Spanish speakers, but they are already good, pretty good in English. So there's a lot of complexity there. And I really have to say that that strategic plan is going in the right direction. And you have all my support in that because definitely as a Latina, as a almost newcomer, you know, inclusiveness is very important for these kids so they can succeed and they get to college and succeed here in life. I just want to say that, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have a gentleman online, John Rogers, if, Jason, if you can put him on. You said unmute yourself, John, if you can hear me? Jason, how do you unmute yourself, is it, what's the call, do you put it in for some by phone? Is it?
There we go, I hope you can hear me now, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, we can, yep.
Excellent, thank you. Hello, everyone, my name is John Rogers. I live in school district E as in Echo in the city of Worcester. I am speaking to agenda item 4-42, which calls for Worcester School Committee members to not look at cellphones or social media during committee meetings. I am calling in favor of this item for the next few points. School committee members are being paid to run school committee business, and transparently. Community committee members are not being paid to look at social media or phones during a school committee meeting. Short of a family emergency, there should be no reason for a committee member to be looking at social media. The other point I want to make is consulting social media or cellphones during meeting time destroys the idea of transparency that I spoke to a moment ago. In closing, how can the average voter feel comfortable that committee business is being conducted in an open manner if committee members are constantly consulting their phone or social media during meetings? Thank you for allowing me to share my thoughts, I yield the remainder of my time. Take care.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to close that part of the meeting and we'll move on to the agenda. Public petition, you have discussed concern of the Worcester Public Schools lunch program? Is that the students back, come on up, introduce yourselves and...
Hi, school committee, Mr. Mayor and chairs. We are here to talk about the school lunch issue and we want to start off by saying that we think this is a very important topic and we are so grateful to have the chance to come back and talk about this. I'm Mary Jango and with me today I have Avital Grunwald, Avery Corey, and Lorelei Leclair. If you guys could move to the next slide, thank you. All right. To start off this project, we created a poll about our school lunch and distributed it to all the students at our Forest Grove Middle School. The following questions were, how do you feel about your school lunch? Is your school food appetizing to you? How often do you eat the school lunch? Do you think school lunch has enough options? What types of food would you like to have available at school? What do you like best about the school lunch and what changes would you like to see? We asked a question in this survey that was very open-ended and giving students the ability to express themselves. The question was, how do you feel about your school lunch? We got a variety of responses, some from, it's okay, it has a good concept, and overall, it's good but it could be better. Could you change, wait, no, but yeah, change aside, please.
Okay. There you go.
How often do you eat school lunch? We also asked this question. 53% of the students say they sometimes ate the school lunch. 12.7% said they never ate the school lunch. 34.3% of the kids said they eat it all the time. Okay. Another question we asked was, what do you like about your school lunch and what changes would you like to see? Number one, from surveys that we submitted to the school, the common opinion has been that there is not much enjoyable about the school lunch right now. I hope you can see that that is a problem. Number two, most changes students would like to see is everything. Everything from the options to the quality to the taste. We, the farthest thing that we get for an option of vegetables at school is a packet of maybe four cut-up cucumbers and a salad in a cup about this big with half of a tomato, like baby tomato. So we hope to change that. And number three, as far as food that the students would like to see on the new menus, it mainly includes having more nutritional options such as salads, fruits, more appetizing and real-looking foods. Does the school lunch have enough options? 86% of the responses said that the school, the school does not have enough options for lunch. Explain, with more lunch options, the students could be more full and appetized. More options would also help the religious community. Some certain religions we have at school can't eat what the school offers, but with more options, they could. More options could help multiple students learn better throughout the day. If kids aren't eating, all right, sorry. If kids are eating more, will they, they will be in a better mood and will learn. On this, oh, sorry, on this slide, which is, is your school food appetizing to you? The cuisine at Worcester Middle School, Forest Grove Middle School is not at all appealing. According to the students that attend, they do not appear to care about it, which is another reason why the students don't find it appealing. A large percent of the students that answered do not think that school lunch is appetizing enough to them. With this, we begin to wonder, what if that, since it's not appetizing, are they eating enough? 71% of students in Worcester, in Worcester come from low-income homes, which causes the students to rely on their breakfast and lunch to come from the school. But breakfast and lunch is not filling, but the breakfast and lunch is not filling. These students rely on lunches and breakfasts, so let's change them to something more filling and something that is nutritious. On this, on this slide is a comparison of the Worcester Public School lunch menu to the Springfield School lunch menu, which the Worcester side consists of, on a Monday would be hamburger, cheeseburger and corn dog. And on Monday would contain a fresh baked corn muffin, cheese pizza or pepperoni, freshly baked and locally sourced buffalo chicken salad. Could you switch to the next slide? Could you switch to the next slide, please? On this slide is an image of what a standard week of Worcester Public School lunch would look like and what a standard week of Springfield school lunches would look like for a week. On the Springfield side, there's clearly more options than the Worcester side has. A few weeks ago, we did a survey asking students for their signature if they like, agree that they would like to see a change of the school lunches. And we gathered a grand total of 515 out of 829 students in our school. I would like to share the signatures that we got.
Sure. Thank you.
What do we like already? While we as a community want to change the school lunches, there are some parts that we do like and we wouldn't want to change. First off, we are eternally grateful that the school lunches are free. Secondly, students say that they like how nice the lunch staff are. They also say that they like the predictability of the meals. A lot of students say they like most of the lunches, it's just some days they don't. In order to make the lunch appetizing, we should add more options or different ingredients. If the students aren't eating, how do we expect them to learn all day? Or how do we expect them to have the energy to stay awake in class? We can also add more religious options for our religious community in the Worcester Public Schools. We propose, sorry. We propose that we take action on this issue. We want more nutrition, quality, and quantity. We propose to have more options. Possibly something like a salad or a side that's not small and leaves us full. Most children go home to homes with food insecurity and not knowing when their next meal is going to be, which leaves them to eat the school lunches, but the school lunches may not be their best option due to their religion or the freshness of the lunches itself. We need to take action on this issue. We propose to change our meals. We want fresh ingredients and better options for a variety of students. Thank you for listening. We appreciate your interest in our presentation. A lot of time and effort went into it. We would like to suggest a modification to our school lunch program with this presentation. Our class, school, and community thinks and knows there's room for improvement. Thank you.
I would say job well done. And it's a nice presentation, especially factually based in comparisons and with written outcome that you'd like to see. So a lot of thought and energy went into this, so much appreciated.
Thank you.
Member Guardiola?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to personally congratulate and applaud these young women on taking on the initiative to spearhead this school lunch survey amongst their peers. This is a well-thought-out research project. I am personally, like I'm sure my colleagues are, appreciative of all the work that goes into trying to find healthy nutritious options for our students, especially those with dietary and religious restrictions here in the city. You know, it's imperative that we're proactive. I know this is in committee now, and we'll have, you know, some conversations there, but I have full confidence that, you know, the superintendent of administration will work to make some significant changes. You know, we're here in the city of Worcester, very diverse population with a lot of different cultures here. So we want to ensure that we have options for those communities and different groups. So I want to thank you again. Congratulations. That was fantastic.
Member McCullough?
Thank you, and I certainly echo Member Guardiola's statements. And appreciate that the girls, the students, came back again tonight to present the full presentation. And just ask, since this was already sent to committee, could we just make sure that the backup from this is added to that item? Thank you.
Remember being careful by Member Benanda?
First of all, thank you. You put a lot of work into this. Good job. Very informative. And when we look at our budget, the one piece that we do have to take into consideration is the fact that what we are doing as a system does not have a cost to us presently. And if that does change and there are costs, then it has to be incorporated into our budget along with the fact that there'll be other pieces to the budget that we'll have to move funds to make the appropriations to change our lunches. Excuse me. So when we look at the backup information on this, what we also should be doing, and I certainly will ask the school committee clerk if it is possible, when this item does come up for discussion, that we send out an invitation to the people that worked on the surveys. And if there is students, if there are other students that are interested in attending, if there is a way to let the schools know. So if they would like to come, give their thoughts, give their ideas, and truly participate in how we move forward with this, not only with the funding, but also with some different ideas of what we can serve, which I think will help us. This way, it gives everyone an opportunity to give the information, look at what our costs will be, and make some determinations on what you are looking for for improvements, but also with administration and school committee take into consideration what the budget would be for the items that you would be interested in at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Benanda?
Thank you for this presentation. I would also suggest that you meet with Donna Lombardi, who is the person that's in charge of food service. I think one of the greatest things about Worcester Public Schools is that you have your own in-house food service. So it's not like you have to go outside to another vendor. She's very creative. She has brought in very trained people, cooks and different bakers, and they've been able to really make great meals. So I think a next step, I don't know if you've met with Donna Lombardi or not yet, but she would be a suggestion that I would give to you. Also, I don't know if you saw this week, the USDA published new standards for breakfast and lunch. And so starting this year, we have to reduce the sodium and also the sugar in lunches. But this year, the sugar, we have to be careful about the level of sugar, but we have till fall '27. So when you're planning your more delicious lunches for you in choice, I think we also have to keep in mind that the USDA had new rules, and we have to watch both the number of sugars and the salt. Thank you.
Sorry, Student Representative Pata?
Thank you guys so much for giving this presentation. I would say you speak for a lot of students in Worcester Public Schools, high school students, elementary school students, and other middle schools other than Forest Grove. I attended Forest Grove, so I kind of understand what you are talking about. But all in all, you guys did really great. And I would also encourage you to spread this to high schools as well, because high schoolers have a lot to say about this in Worcester Tech, Doherty, South, North. So if you can find a way, connect with some groups or your guidance counselors, and I would definitely encourage you to spread this through. But thank you, guys.
Thank you. Madam Superintendent? Let's suspend the rules and let you speak if you like. We're going to suspend the rules first. We're going to suspend the rules real quickly. Everybody in agreement? Those in favor, opposed, so ordered. Go ahead.
David Grunwald, I'm a parent of five kids, three currently in the Worcester Public School, one of them in the room. Where my Iraqi, Iranian, and Israeli colleagues can meet is that maybe you can leave a cheese or a cheeseburger, and maybe you can leave a pepperoni or a cheese pizza. And then already, there's a lot more accessibility. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Superintendent?
Through the chair. So thank you, ladies, for sharing. And I concur, the presentation, both last time and this time, very much is in alignment in demonstrating vision of a learner. And then most specifically, I want to return the shout-out to, I hope I don't, I'm going to say your name wrong incorrectly, Avital. Is that you right there? Yes, I thought so, because it's your dad. I can tell, there's a connection there. Thank you for sending the email today, or I think it was last night, and for giving such gratitude to your teacher, Mr... I know I sent him a note to Mr. Degnan. Degnan, yes. Last time you were here, I was so impressed with what you presented. And so I sent a thank-you note to your teacher because I can see that, you know, I know that this doesn't just happen. This is because hard work of educators really planning. So thank you for going that extra step and recognizing your teacher. I actually came to listen to your civics project, but because of the snow day, it got changed, and I didn't get to see it. So we'll just have to get it on a calendar or another day. We are going to change some things in Worcester Public Schools when it comes to the food. This is something I've heard from families and students since my listening and learning tour. So I've had to work on some things in the background that you don't need to be worried about, but know it, we haven't forgotten. And your voices will be heard, and we will include you in that work. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so send that presentation to the committee, teaching and learning. What's that? Finance, I'm sorry, finance. All those in favor, opposed, so ordered. Okay. Important Superintendent, climate and culture inclusivity, a breakthrough. Madam Superintendent? Yeah.
Thank you. Through the chair, as the team comes up, I'll be introducing them. So this presentation will be made by Annie Arsalosa, our Chief Academic Support Officer, Dr. Kareem Tatum, one of our executive directors, who was instrumental in the climate and culture priority of the Worcester Public Schools' promise, our strategic plan. And then finally, Thomas Tony, our Administrative Director of Positive Youth Development. Worcester Public Schools continues to really work on transforming our learning environment so that they are inclusive with a sense of belonging. We heard from the community, I've heard from the community since the time I arrived here, that our children, our families want to be part of our learning environments and feel like they're welcome there whenever they are on campus. And what we know about educational neuroscience, which is a relatively new field of study in the world of education, is children, actually humans, need to feel safe, cared for, and they need to feel like they belong in order to be at the top level, top ability and optimal level for learning. So the two go hand in hand. If we want children to achieve academically, we must make sure that our schools have that sense of belonging. Again, that's based on educational neuroscience. And so, committee, what you're going to hear tonight are the breakthroughs that we've had in Worcester Public Schools in a very short amount of time. And it's because of the investment that you have made as a committee. Things like our Dean of Students at our high schools, our climate and culture teams at all of our schools, our climate and culture assistants, our wraparound coordinators. These are investments that you have made, and we are seeing those breakthroughs. As you're listening, I want you to really pay attention to those breakthroughs and how your decisions have impacted that. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Arsalosa. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Monares. So good evening. We're delighted to be here tonight to present the report of the Superintendent on Culture and Climate Inclusivity, a breakthrough. Excuse me. Tonight, we hope you'll gain an understanding of our inclusive culture and climate efforts across our district. Oh, next slide, Casey, I'm sorry. You'll receive information about our breakthrough work that is underway and the positive impact that it's made thus far. You'll also learn our next steps in this powerful work on behalf of all the children in the Worcester Public Schools, because when we say all, we mean all. Next slide, please. The work that we facilitate is always aligned with our strategic plan, which directly aligns with our superintendent goals. Tonight, we are focusing on the third goal, which is collaboratively leading school teams in identifying and using multiple sources of evidence to assess, respond, and improve outcomes. This ties directly into our school growth plan, specifically focusing on student engagement. I'll now turn it over to Dr. Tatum, who facilitated the Culture and Climate Working Group during our strategic planning workshops last fall.
Thank you, Ms. Arsalosa. As Ms. Arsalosa mentioned, I was fortunate enough to collaborate with stakeholders to develop the culture, climate component of our district strategic plan. This work is important due to the fact that a positive and healthy school culture and climate can serve as the foundation for high-quality teaching and learning environments. Much of the work, much of our work focused on shaping our desired state for the culture and climate of our school communities, as well as developing three specific aims. Our desired state is for the Worcester Public Schools to be committed to providing and sustaining environments in which all members of our school communities grow and thrive in environments where they feel valued, safe, and they belong. And I think when we typically talk about the culture and climate of schools, we think about our students, we think about our faculty and our staff. We really wanted to call out our families in this process because we really believe that our families have tremendous potential in shaping the culture and climate of our schools. In terms of our aims, we wanted to increase all school community members' feelings of value, safety, and sense of belonging across all schools and grade levels. We wanted to enhance the use of culturally responding teaching practices to connect learning to students' backgrounds, experiences, and interests. And last, we wanted to expand the use of restorative practices to create a more equitable learning environment for all of our students. I know that you have all seen the tiered support pyramid in previous reports of the superintendent. The tiered support pyramid shows the different levels of intervention that our students may need to ensure academic, social, emotional, and behavioral growth and success. Our Tier One supports consist of evidence-based practices that should be effective for the overwhelming majority of our students. We are working to really enhance our universal Tier One supports through a systematic approach to instruction that is both explicit and differentiated and ultimately prevents the need for more intensive intervention for our students. And looking at our Tier Two supports, our Tier Two supports are provided for students who need additional support beyond what we provide in Tier One. And our Tier Three are our most intensive supports. And those can look like individualized instruction, one-on-one coaching or counseling, and more frequent progress monitoring as needed. Next slide, Casey. When we think about our district priority focus areas, we know that they're not only predicated on what we observe as we're in schools and the data points that we see, but they're also based upon the insight that we receive from multiple stakeholder groups, including our principals, our teacher advisory council, our student advisory council, as well as our CPAC and LPAC. And our focus is to provide classroom instruction that fosters an inclusive community and one that sustains and builds upon the cultural and linguistic diversity of our students to improve the level of engagement and sense of belonging for all of our students in the Worcester Public Schools. Next slide, Casey. As we work towards actualizing our district strategic plan, we have focused our work and efforts into the following four areas. The work in each of these areas is focused on engaging our stakeholders in meaningful ways to ensure that a sense of belonging exists regardless of one's lived experiences. The first bucket here is increasing student engagement. At our elementary level, I know we're all aware, we adopted our Core Knowledge Language Arts Program, or CKLA, which is a program designed to improve upon the reading, writing, and language comprehension of our students through providing them with engaging and high-level texts. At the secondary level, we're really focusing on ensuring that our faculty, staff, and students have access to HQIMs, or high-quality instruction materials. And these are materials that are not only standards-based, but are also highly engaging and designed to meet the needs of our academically and culturally diverse student body. Next, we have our restorative practices. At our elementary level, we have the Undercover Anti-Bullying Program, which is a targeted, non-punitive restorative process that relies on peer influence to curb incidents of bullying in our schools. And at the secondary level, we have what we call restorative practice mediation, which provides our stakeholders with the opportunity to repair any harm between members of our community, student versus student or student and faculty. As you all know, over the last year or so, we've been working with multiple mental health agencies to come into our schools and provide more support to the mental health needs of our students. And last, we've done a ton to increase the supports to our students, obviously with the help of this school committee, with our wellness rooms, our Dean of Students, our Culture and Climate Assistants, and our Culture and Climate Teams, which you will hear about later in this presentation. At this time, I would like to pass it to Mr. Tony, who will speak to where we were as a district in relation to culture and climate, as well as our current state.
Thank you, Dr. Tatum. So on this slide, you'll see that it breaks down the Massachusetts Chapter 71 Discipline Law. This slide outlines the three discipline laws that could lead to suspension, as well as emergency removal, which functions similar to suspension. First, we'll explain emergency removal. So emergency removal involves temporarily removing a student from school when they are held accountable for disciplinary offense or their behavior persists despite support or redirection. This removal occurs when the student's presence poses a danger to individuals or school property, disrupts the school's order, and no alternative solutions are available at that time. The temporary removal should not exceed more than two school days. Now, we're going to give some information on the three discipline laws found in the Chapter 71 Discipline Law. First, we have 37H, which encompasses possession or use of a controlled substance, possession or use of a weapon, and... or use of a weapon, and physical assault on a Worcester Public School employee. These infractions warrant the suspension of a student at the principal's or, or, at the principal or designated discretion. Then we have 37H and a half, which pertains to felony charges or convictions a student has received. This is a report to the Worcester Public Schools via email from the Worcester Police Department. The Worcester Police Department also contacts Worcester Public Schools to confirm convictions for Worcester Public School students. These infractions are also suspendable at the principal or designated discretion. Finally, now we have the 37H and three quarters, which encompasses all other behaviors observed in school or on school grounds. School leaders have collaborated with district leaders and other specialized staff to implement interventions and remedies to support students, maintain school safety, and keep our kids in school. We have made commendable efforts to shift from punitive measurement, measures to restorative practices, demonstrating creativity and adaptability in addressing disciplinary issues. Our main goal, again, is to keep our kids in school. Next slide. So on this slide, it shows you the key reasons behind the change that comes to the state for the 37H and three quarters law. So the first being keeping, keeping students in school. So obviously, research shows that students who attend regularly tend to have better academic outcomes. It also provides students with a structured environment where students have opportunities to develop social skills, build relationships with peers and adults, and learn to navigate diverse social situations. The second purpose is to move from punitive to restorative practices. Restorative practices prioritize, prioritizes holding students accountable for their actions while also emphasizing the importance of taking responsibility for repairing harm caused to others. Restorative practices prioritize building and maintaining positive relationships within the school community. By fostering an open communication, empathy, and mutual respect, restorative approaches help strengthen connections between students, educators, and staff, creating a more supportive and inclusive school environment. By embracing our restorative approaches, schools can create a safer, more supportive, supportive and inclusive learning environment for all members of the school community. One approach we have piloted, as mentioned by Dr. Tatum this year, is a restorative mediation approach, where the conflict is identified, the staff assesses the situation, and students are coached through a scripted questions that, that will be asked during a mediation between the two parties to develop an understanding and reduce their anxiety to meet with the other party. Now, onto the third purpose, it's to address mental health needs. Mental health issues such as anxiety, depression, and trauma can significantly impact students' ability to learn, concentrate, and perform academically. By addressing mental health needs, schools can support students in achieving their full academic potential. Mental health is an integral component of the overall well-being of our students. By fostering a supportive and accepting environment, schools can promote a culture of understanding and empathy. The final purpose is to eliminate the school-to-prison pipeline. By focusing on education, counseling, and support services, we can help our students address underlying issues, develop positive strategies, coping strategies, and make better choices for their future. So where we are. So as we analyze the, the charts on the next slide, it's evident that our students were expressing a need for mental health support, support to navigate the challenges of, of school, problem solve effectively, make informed decisions, and acquire that, and acquire skills that will propel them forward and towards their educational and career aspirations. The following two slides, the ones up right now, will present data gathered from the Worcester Division of Public Health, derived from a survey connected, conducted by DPH to identify the primary concerns among second-age school students. So this chart right here is a survey that the DPH administered to high school age students. As we can see, that there is a notable increase in stress and anxiety levels among students in 2002 compared to 2019. This shift is likely attributed to the impact of COVID-19 and the challenges associated with returning to school. Encouragingly, the data also reveals a decrease in instances of violence and bullying in 2022 compared to 2019. Slide, yeah. So while anxiety isn't represented in this graph for middle school students, it's evident that stress levels are notable, notably elevated among our students. As they return to school and resume their daily routines, coupled with additional responsibilities, it's understandable that they are experiencing heightened levels of stress. These circumstances can sometimes lead to poor decisions, which previously might have resulted in a few days out of school, or in more severe cases, long-term suspension. After reviewing the data from the Department of Health, it becomes evident that our students were in need of intensive social and emotional support. They are navigating a multitude of challenges, including academic pressures, employment responsibilities, family obligations, and the demands of daily routines. Amidst, amidst these complexities, our students are actively seeking guidance and support to navigate their experiences effectively. Furthermore, the data highlighted the urgent need for comprehensive social and emotional learning supports, counseling services, and resources to address the diverse needs of our student population. So where we are now. So observing the chart to the left. You notice that our out-of-school suspensions are a few hundred below the figures recorded in 2023. This data is further dissected by grade level in the adjacent chart, revealing a promising trend towards achieving one of the lowest out-of-school suspension rates across all grade levels. While we acknowledge that there are ongoing effects to reshape schools' behaviors, it is essential to commend the unwavering dedication of our principals, teachers, and school staff, as well as the district, in ensuring our students remain in school and receive the necessary supports to foster positive behavioral changes. Moreover, it's heartening, it's heartening to observe that our high school students have shown a decrease in out-of-school suspension compared to the same period in 2020. With this trajectory, we are optimistic about finishing the year with out-of-school suspension figures below, below those recorded in the years prior. Now, this chart reveals the discrepancies in suspension rates among various demographic groups within the WPS. A disparity, disparity ratio of 1.0 or lower suggests no significant difference, whereas a ratio above 1.0 indicates a higher likelihood of suspension for that group compared to the reference group. For instance, when examining black males, a ratio of one to one, 1.1 signifies that they are 1.1 times more likely to, to be suspended than black females. Upon, upon reviewing this data, it becomes apparent that we must explore the underlying factors contributing to why students of color are more susceptible to suspension compared to the white peers.
As you probably noticed from Mr. Tony's presentation, we have made progress in relation to the culture, climate of our schools, but we must remain committed to the development and implementation of a multi-pronged approach as a means to support the academic, social, emotional, and behavioral growth of our students. On this slide, we have a couple of quotes from some of our faculty and staff. The first reads, "Culture and climate is top-notch. I feel supported when I ask for help. Admin is engaged with students and staff," and that comes from a South High community staff member. And a Worcester Alternative School staff member states, "Students are coming into school because they feel welcome and safe." And that is exactly how we want all of our stakeholders to feel when they enter our, our schools. This slide captures the supports that have been recently incorporated or modified in our schools with the goal of improving upon culture and climate. First, we have a dean of students. We have a dean at each one of our large high schools, and the primary focus of a dean is to be responsible for all non-academic student-related matters. Our deans supervise our culture and climate assistants. They lead and supervise restorative practices. They supervise our wellness rooms, as well as they have a role in, in discipline. In addition, they create and lead positive behavioral intervention systems and train and coach individuals in preventive behavioral and supports and restorative practices. Our culture and climate assistants, we have three allocated at our large high schools and one allocated at our middle schools. And the primary purpose of our culture and climate assistants is to develop a positive school culture that ensures the safety of staff, students, and visitors. Our culture and climate assistants are there to build positive and meaningful relationships and to support the enforcement of school rules. Ultimately, we want these individuals to be positive, supportive, and visible members of our school communities. We have a culture and climate team at each one of our schools. Our culture and climate teams consist of faculty and staff members at the school, so these aren't newly hired position, these are staff members that currently work in our buildings. And they focus on establishing practices that promote a positive in culture and climate in our schools. Oftentimes, these individuals create celebrations for our students for academic achievement, they create celebrations for our staff members, and they provide opportunities for families to come into the building and engage in meaningful and fun activities with students. We have a wraparound coordinator, one in every school within the Worcester Public Schools, and they're accountable for building the capacity and supports in the school and in the community to address students' academic and non-academic barriers. They work to empower our parents to be effective advocates for their children, and they also facilitate two-way communication between the school and community resources. We have wellness rooms in each of our secondary schools, and these wellness rooms provide supervision and instruction to students who are experiencing episodes of dysregulation that may cause for more monitoring, goal-setting, and/or the development of coping strategies before these students can return to the class. And last but not least, our mental health supports, as Mr. Tony highlighted in the previous slide, we are currently working with multiple mental health agencies to support our students in our schools. In addition, we are committed to continuing to build the capacity of our school-based school adjustment counselors and our Q-team members to continue the work they are doing to support the mental health of our students. So early in the presentation, we reviewed the tiered support pyramid. This pyramid specifically focuses on the supports that schools, students, and faculty and staff receive with the goal of ensuring that a thriving culture and climate exists in our school communities. So our, our ultimate goal in tier one is to establish a culture of belonging in our schools using the individuals that I just spoke of, our deans, our culture and climate assistants, our culture and climate teams, our wraparound coordinators, as well as our faculty and staff in our schools. In terms of our tier two supports, I discussed the wellness rooms. In addition to that, structured check-in meetings and feedback and coaching. And for our tier three supports, individualized counseling, check-ins, support and safety plans, and goal-setting and success planning as, as well. This slide highlights some of the changes that we are proud to say are making a difference in our schools in relation to culture and climate. If you look at our school-based supports and practices, our culture and climate teams, our wellness rooms, as well as our restorative practices, are definitely making a difference in our schools. In terms of our staffing, we have culture and climate-focused instructional coaches on our Q teams. I spoke of the deans, as well as our RAPS and school adjustment counselors. And last but not least, our culture and climate assistants are having a tremendous impact in our schools. And last but not least, in alignment with the vision of a learner, making sure that we're embedding future-ready instruction into everything that we do and developing the sense of belonging, which lies at the heart of our instructional framework. And now, we'll turn it back over to Mr. Tony, who will highlight how these breakthrough strategies have impacted some data sets within our district.
Thank you, Dr. Tatum. So this slide illustrates the Worcester Public Schools' suspension data for all grade levels and programs. As you can see, suspensions have declined across all grades. We can attribute some of the decline to the breakthrough strategies that Dr. Tatum referred to on the previous slide. For example, the implementation of school-based supports and practices included, included the establishment of culture and climate teams in all schools, dean of students, culture and climate assistants, and wellness rooms. Our specialized staff, such as deans of students, have been playing a pivotal role in building relationships with our students and offering social and emotional support when needed. They work closely with principals and are utilizing other specialized support staff and the wellness rooms to reshape behaviors and provide an invaluable space for students to reset and gather their thoughts, enabling them to address and manage emotions or behaviors that may lead, that may have otherwise led to suspensions. Our schools are also actively fostering a positive culture and climate through the dedicated efforts of culture and climate teams, as Dr. Tatum talked about, providing our students with increased opportunities to cultivate a sense of belonging and thrive in a supportive learning environment. Additionally, there is a united focus on enhancing the culture and climate among not only our students, but also all our staffs. Schools have organized extracurricular activities for staff and the school community outside of school hours to strengthen family relations, strengthen staff cohesion, and morale. So displayed on this slide is our attendance data illustrating the student attendance for the past six school years, including the current year, 2024. Despite our district being only 0.3 lower than the attendance rate for Massachusetts, according to the state report card, we are well above other large districts such as Boston and Springfield. Our break, our breakthrough strategies aim to enhance attendance through school-based practice, support, and the expertise of our specialized staff, such as RAPS, RAP coordinators, and student adjustment councils at each school. School-based teams are focusing on cultivating relationships with our families and students who are facing attendance challenges, and equipping them with resources and strategies to overcome barriers and ensure regular attendance. It's crucial to prioritize attendance as it significantly impacts students' academic success and their overall, their overall well-being. And with the implementation of our breakthrough strategies, we should continue to see improvement in our attendance.
So I know that you are all familiar with our instructional framework, but if you look at the outer circle, you will notice the five skills and dispositions that align with our district vision of a learner. As we move in, the framework highlights our teaching cycle model of plan, instruct, assess, adapt. This cycle is meaningful as it serves as a lever upon which we are working to enhance the academic, cultural, and climate of our schools. The next circles discuss important aspects of teaching and learning. Much of the information shared in this report of the superintendent rests in the heart of the framework. The heart of the framework provides us with our purpose and motivation for the work that is done within the Worcester Public Schools. And it is through this lens that we understand the importance of enhancing the culture and climate of our schools to ensure that we are providing and sustaining environments in which all members of our school communities grow and thrive in schools in which they feel valued, safe, and they belong. As we work to this end, we will undoubtedly experience increased engagement levels of our students, faculty, staff, as well as our families. And the next four slides highlight areas for ensuring quality teaching and learning experiences for our students, faculty, and our staff members. As we work to support and engage our students and families, we understand that we must first engage our faculty and staff in this very important and meaningful work. This slide focuses on the results from this year's Worcester Public Schools' mid-year post-check. The aim of the post-check is to provide our faculty and staff members with the opportunity to assess aspects of their building's culture and climate. It must be noted that this year's post-check yielded 742 more responses than last year, which is great because we are gaining more insight around the culture and climate of our schools. Faculty and staff were asked to rate their buildings in four different areas. The first being that my school site is a welcoming place to be, and we are currently at a 4.1 out of 5, which is a 6% increase. I feel supported and respected at my school or site. We're at a 4 out of 5, which is an 8% increase. My school site is safe and orderly. We're at a 3.7 out of 5, which is also an 8% increase. And lastly, my leadership team provides opportunities for me to learn and grow. We're at a 3.9 out of 5, which is a 9% increase. So as you can see, we have made So as you can see, we have made progress from last year, and this is an area in which we know that we must continue to grow to provide the optimal work environment for our staff members, which we know will transform to a more meaningful and engaging learning environment for our students. At this time, I will pass it back over to Ms. Azalozza, who will unpack the meaning of "all means all" within the Worcester Public Schools.
Thank you, Dr. Tatum. So these are two quotes. One of them is from our student in the Superintendent Student Advisory Council. "It all starts with a mindset, and as long as you are consistent and disciplined about it, things can change," on being provided a voice. A Burncoat Middle School teacher says, "Our culture and climate team are literally worth their weight in gold." So "all means all" signifies a commitment... Actually, if you can go back just for a minute, Casey. Sorry. Thank you. "All means all signifies a commitment to creating a safe, welcoming, and supportive environment for every child. It means recognizing and valuing unique strengths and contributions of each child, fostering an inclusive culture where diversity is celebrated and valued. It requires proactive measures, such as breakthrough strategies, to remove barriers to learning and promote accessibility. All means all is a powerful reminder that inclusivity in schools goes beyond mere rhetoric. It's a commitment to providing equal opportunities, support, and acceptance to every child. By embracing the principle of 'all means all,' we can truly create an inclusive and equitable learning environment for all. We'd like to show you a short video depicting what it looks like when all children and staff feel valued and feel a sense of belonging." So we will bring you back to the vision of a learner. All the work that our divisions facilitate is always in service of a vision of a learner. When our children are faced with challenges, we want them to use their words and be effective communicators. We want to empower them by providing them a voice as change agents in their schools because their voice matters. We want them to be curious lifelong learners and have the skills they need to help solve our complex world problems. And finally, we want them to be fully engaged in their school communities and in the communities in which they live, so that they know they can make a difference in the world they live in. This person on the tightrope is an example of the balancing act that our schools have had to do over the past few years since the pandemic. Our schools were immersed in caring for the present as a priority as we worked through COVID and returned to in-person learning. The work was necessary because safety and the well-being of our community took a front seat. We're now at a point where we're stabilizing our district through these breakthrough strategies that were highlighted in tonight's presentation. These are a few quotes from our Belmont Community School staff members. "Leadership's open-door policy, responsiveness, and efforts to maintain an orderly and safe environment contribute significantly to the overall positive atmosphere in the school. The emphasis on building strong student-teacher relationships are contributing to a positive school climate." So here is our roadmap moving forward. We want to deepen and strengthen the strategies and practices that Dr. Tatum and Mr. Tony highlighted tonight. Like anything, when we implement something for the first time, there's a bit of a learning curve. And as we navigate this school year, we learned what works and what needs to be refined. This will be our work heading into next year. We also developed a train-the-trainer model last summer, and therefore, we'll be tapping into the experts in our buildings to expand those evidence-based breakthrough strategies to other schools. We'll also be putting out a survey to schools who piloted these evidence-based strategies this year to learn how we can improve our services and support schools, implementing these strategies on behalf of fostering a culture of continuous learning and improvement. And finally, education is ever-evolving, and therefore, we have to keep abreast of new research-based strategies so that we're always on the cutting edge. We're preparing children to be future-ready, and therefore, we need to be practicing and modeling the behaviors we want to see. These are a few other quotes before I bring in our voices from the field. "Climate and culture staff are making a huge difference. They are great. I am honestly surprised how effective these have been," Burncoat High School staff member. "Our school has an excellent climate where everyone feels welcome. I'm excited to go to work every day and feel supported. The connections with students are apparent," Union Hill staff members. So we'd like to bring some voices from the field to the podium to talk a little bit about how it's been going this year in terms of the culture and climate. So we're going to start with Steve Hathaway. He's our Culture and Climate Assistant from Dory High School.
Steve Hathaway. I'd like to call Emily Sawyer up with me. She is my...
Absolutely.
Right hand. The climate and culture thing you put in is wonderful. Me and Emily meet with 80% of these kids first thing in the morning from quarter seven to 7:15 before they go to their press class. Emily?
It means a lot to be the first and last person students see on a daily basis. Unlike teachers, the Culture and Climate Assistance see the entire student body throughout the day. We get to engage and build positive relationships with every single student. Acknowledging students by their name, giving tours to new students, asking them about their day, telling them good morning, and giving them words of encouragement are just a few of the things we do on a daily basis. I believe our position has created such a huge impact in our high school because students know they can find one of us in the hallway and know we will help them, whether that be going to guidance, helping them find a classroom, a sentence going to the nurse, or simply needing a trusting adult to talk to. Teachers are continuously acknowledging our effort to make the halls a safe environment and ensuring students make it to class on time. Our biggest goal is letting the students know we are there for them. Being a parent to a Worcester Public School student makes me happy knowing they have a Culture and Climate Assistant watching over them during the day." Thank you.
Next, we'll call up our Dean of Students at the Worcester Tech High School, Ed Walker.
Good evening, folks. I'm Edward Walker, and I get to be the Dean of Students at Worcester Technical High School. It's a pleasure to be able to be here this evening and share aspects of my role as the Dean with you, with hopes to highlight the significance and the importance of the position and its responsibilities. But I will preface my remarks by saying I will not be able to cover everything I do as a dean, but I invite anyone to come and check me out at Worcester Tech if you want to verify for yourselves if we are taking care of business. And as a sidebar, it's going to sound like I was working collaboratively with the trio in front of me and with our notes. That is not the case. However, I do believe that it is a powerful testament that it sounds like we are of the same mind and same mission. So in a nutshell, my role can be explored through four general lenses. The first is student success, in which we focus on engagement, behavior, learning, and achievement. Second is climate and culture success, in which we strive to foster a healthy school culture and climate for our students, school personnel, and families. And finally, family and community engagement, in which we aim to forge connections with students and their families within and beyond our school walls. Now, when most people hear the title "Dean," they assume that it's incomplete or incorrect if it's not Dean of Discipline, and that is incorrect, so I wanted to address it. Yes, I do work with students through discipline infractions, and yes, I do administer consequences. However, as the dean, particularly at Worcester Tech, the goal is to shift the way some people think about discipline. I take great pride in the level at which we have implemented some restorative justice practices, which is a move away from the punitive systems that solely focus on which rule was broken, who was responsible, and which punishment is deserved. As a dean, I place emphasis on teaching our students accountability, alternate behaviors, and repairing harm when necessary. And just to be clear, folks, our restorative practices are not an effort to eliminate consequences, but to complement consequences so that our students will ultimately desire improved behaviors and understand the importance of relationships, responsibility, and sometimes reintegration. So yes, we do have in-school suspension, and yes, I have had to exercise out-of-school suspension, but that is generally the very last resort. Instead, I spend far more time teaching students how to deliver and even receive an apology. I've spent countless hours facilitating peace circles and mediations that often end in tears of joy, handshakes and hugs between students. I can't begin to tell you how many restorative, reflective conversations that I have had with students. In fact, almost all consequences are followed by caring conversations, and that's what discipline looks like at Worcester Tech. I am also fortunate to lead our freshman success team, which consists of a ninth-grade guidance counselor, a ninth-grade school adjustment counselor, a behavior specialist, a wraparound coordinator, and school psychologist. Collectively, we focus on everything associated with grade nine success. We meet three times a week to think through and work through what it means for our ninth graders to be successful as individuals and as a class. Academic success, social and emotional maturity, and student personal growth is our mission. Each of us brings a level of expertise to the table that forces us to think about our students holistically. For instance, guidance counselors take the lead. Our guidance counselor takes the lead on academic success. The school adjustment counselor is our SEL spearhead. The behavior specialist pushes us to think strategically about the behaviors that we're seeing, while the school psychologist helps us to put a name on the behaviors that we're seeing. Our wraparound coordinator's primary role, as she takes the lead on ensuring that our students and families are gaining access and resources around the things that they need. And as the dean, my job is to guide, support, sometimes challenge, and even cheerlead for our team. In other words, I orchestrate that symphony. I also supervise our climate and culture specialists, which are three staff persons that are likely the most recognized faces in our building at this point. They are rarely relationship specialists, and as a team, we have three primary goals. First, we want to keep our students in class as much as possible during instruction time. Two, we want to build relationships with students to ensure that they all have a trusted adult in the building. And three, our CC specialists support teachers and staff as first responders to most situations. Collectively, we patrol the building and the hallways, ensuring that our students are where they're supposed to be, and if they are not, we will escort them to where they are supposed to be. But in some cases, if they need to spend some time with our CC specialists engaging in conversation, I encourage them to do that as well. So we are working to establish and launch our wellness room, in which our CC specialists will play a significant role. We meet formally once a week, but by default, we meet multiple times daily. So as the dean, my charge is to guide, support, and empower the specialists to help us to establish and maintain a healthy and learning environment for students, but also a healthy and working environment for our faculty and staff. I also oversee and advise our climate and culture committee, which has two chairpersons and five dedicated teachers that meet on a monthly basis. A few months ago, we solicited the perspective of our staff and students through our very own climate and culture survey regarding what they believe the school needs to be a healthy and vibrant community for all. Nearly 70% of the staff responded, and 97% of the staff that responded were favorable regarding aspects of identity, feeling respected and valued. And through this process, we learned a great deal about the people's desires, and now we are working collaboratively and daily to bring all of those ideas and concepts to life. Just yesterday, we hosted arguably one of Tech's best events this year called the Culture and Spirit Day. We had team-building exercises within shops. We had a cultural flag reveal, which includes the hanging of 70-plus flags in the cafeteria, representing the home and ancestral countries of our community members. We had a beautifully articulated poem reading. We had dance performers, the Caribbean Vibe Steel Pan Band was there to perform, and we had abbreviated field day in the gym and more. The climate and culture committee co-coordinated this event with the support of student council, Black Student Union leaders, and a team of admin and teachers. This event was successful due to the level of support that we received from the various members of the school community, and that is, in essence, the charge of the climate and culture committee. As the dean, I am interconnected to the planning and execution of all endeavors that is led by or that are led by that committee. And the final thing, I'll speak to you because I'm starting to feel like I'm interviewing for the job again. But the final thing I'll share is our ambition behind family and community engagement. This is an essential role for the dean, and we are very clear about that at Tech. And admittedly, I need to do better in this area. Sure, I am at the evening event, and I probably have seen many of you at some of the sporting events. I am finalizing the details of a spring event that I will be hosting called "Dine with the Dean," in which I will invite families to come and eat and talk with me as we hold, what I'm calling, a no-hold-barred session, so that we can reflect on the year, think about the future, and I can respond to some of the pressing questions that the parents might have. But also, this is a great opportunity for me to tell them what I've been dealing with with their children. But in closing, in closing, it would be negligent of me to not mention that this is my first year as a dean at Worcester Tech. Not my first year in education, not my first year as a dean, but my first year as a dean at Worcester Tech. It is also the first year for the climate and culture specialists, and it's the first time that we'll have a dedicated team responsible for all things grade nine. It would have been our first year with the wellness room, and it's our first year with the Rise Network, for which I am the point person. And my point is this, that's a lot of newness. And anyone who has been a professional for more than a week knows that newness is often met with resistance. So pardon my lack of humility when I say that the work of the dean is fundamental, it is foundational, and sometimes fun. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. And last but not least, we have our Sullivan Middle School principal, Kendra Cox.
I think they set me up to follow him. I'm going to do the best I can, but this is my dream come true, a captive audience and a microphone, so. I was asked to speak tonight about Sullivan's Wellness Room, or as we call it at Sullivan, the Reset Room. We've had a reset room at Sullivan since the 2018 school year, when the former principal and I came to Sullivan as a new administrative team selected to execute turnaround work. The Reset Room is a space in the building to do exactly what the title implies, reset. It's important to note that this is neither in-school suspension nor a punishment, even though there may be times that students are there after breaking a school rule. Students are brought to the Reset Room by an administrator or school adjustment counselor after staff has determined that they're in need of support, and honestly, the support they need is as unique as our student population. For some, they have engaged in a poor behavioral choice; for others, they are returning from school after a traumatic event or extended illness; and some are just experiencing some form of dysregulation that makes them unable to be successful in their mainstream classroom at the moment. The Reset Room provides a calm, structured classroom for these students who need a space to reflect, review school-wide expectations, refocus, and reset in order to achieve success in the larger learning community. The Reset Room utilizes the same practices as all Sullivan classrooms, like essential question, an objective, an agenda, and a starter when they enter the room, which is a think-it-over form. The teacher's main objective is to develop a rapport with each student, process their written reflection, and then discuss different avenues of response or how students are feeling. Data is tracked through the Reset Starter, and teacher anecdotal remarks are collected and then shared out with the SEL and admin team. There's a Reset Room tracker form that provides timestamp data for locations, days, times, and if mediation or restorative action was attempted or achieved. Depending on why they are there, students are encouraged to seek restorative mediation with the SAC, write notes of apology, prepare statements for future classroom circles, and other restorative practices. Students are escorted to the Reset Room to provide a quick synopsis of the students' needs by an administrator or member of the SEL team. Once they've arrived... Once they've arrived, wait time is recommended for the student to transition in, depending on their emotional state. They're then able to do the Reset Starter, which is available in multiple languages, and it requires them to list the three core values at Sullivan, describe the conflict or issue, predict the other side, summarize how they chose to respond, reflect on what they could have been said or done that might have changed the outcome, and create next steps to repair and re-enter their classroom. Ultimately, the objective of reset is to reintegrate the student into the traditional classroom as quickly as possible, but ultimately, students return when they're ready, which may take one class period or an entire day or more. The amount of time in reset depends on the needs of the student and is determined by the educators and the SEL team. This space is overseen by a certified classroom teacher, and students are able to continue to access their academics as schoolwork is provided by their teacher, and the teacher who oversees it can provide educational support and instruction. Oftentimes, we'll find classroom teachers checking in on their free periods when they know they have students down there to offer support, and this is critical, as a focus on academics is crucial to overall student success. The physical space of the Reset Room provides supports for the various emotional needs. There's flexible seating, there's steam activities, there's art supplies, fidgets, bubble timers, headphones, whatever might actually help students be successful. The positive impact of this space on the Sullivan School community has grown over the past five years. Initially, there were some staff who struggled with students making use of this space. Over the years, the merits of this space have been proven time and time again, and as we note that students are able to take accountability for their actions, build positive connections with the Reset Room teacher, reflect on their choices and responses to situations, engage in academic and social-emotional learning even when they're experiencing challenges, and engage in restorative practices such as circles, mediations, notes of apologies, or repairs to the community. Most importantly, it's helped us to keep students in school instead of being suspended out of school, and we're able to hold them to be accountable for their actions in a different manner. I could share a lot of stories about the Reset Room, but one of the most powerful ones that stands out in my mind is of a situation involving a budding graffiti artist who had been creating artwork prolifically in the boys' bathroom. It took a while to catch my little Picasso, but once I did, I was able to bring him down to the Reset Room, and the teacher did the work of leading him through unpacking how his actions affected and impacted our school community as a whole. She was able to use our school's core values of respectful, responsible, and ready-to-learn to guide the work, and through reflection, discussion, and some writing, he was able to see how what he did was causing a negative impact on our school community and its stakeholders. Once he was ready, the custodian, myself, and the Reset Room teacher and student sat down and to engage in a restorative conversation. The custodian was able to share his point of view and how the student's actions impacted him. The student was able to acknowledge this, apologize, and a repair was made to the relationship. In most circumstances, a student caught completing graffiti in the bathroom could be suspended, especially as this had occurred on multiple occasions. But in this case, the young man was able to stay where he belonged, in school, and we were able to do what we were here to do, educate the student on how to make better choices, and how what he does and how he acts has a ripple effect across our school community. I'm confident that what we do and the services that we provide in the Reset Room help students grow into better, more accountable human beings. It allows them to learn and grow from mistakes, find a place of respite when they need it, and to feel what every student deserves to feel in school, respected, cared for, and educated, even when they make a poor decision and even when they're struggling. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cox. This concludes our presentation. I will close with the following. We're excited for what's to come. You know, we still have a lot of work to do, but we're confident that this positive momentum will continue in service of creating safe, inclusive, positive, welcoming school culture and climates across our district. I'll now turn it over to Dr. Monades.
Thank you. What you heard tonight, school committee, is truly the transformation of Worcester Public Schools' culture and climate. You heard systems thinking. We are working in a preventative approach rather than being reactionary. We're moving away from status quo so that more children and staff can feel safe, can feel cared for, feel welcomed, and everybody achieves. We're going to continue to nurture, scale, and sustain these breakthrough strategies so that we have an inclusive learning environment, and that will require us to be nimble and flexible. But as we make a difference, we know all children will learn, and all the adults who serve them will call Worcester Public Schools their home. Thank you.
Thank you, and I just want to say thank you for the presentation. I thought it was really well done, something we've been waiting for. You know, I remember speaking probably over a year ago, telling the superintendent, I said, "Here in the chamber, about a year behind where we want to be." And we're getting there. So, it was very impressive, the speakers who spoke, a few voices in what you're doing, and we, this, I want to thank the superintendent and the school committee, voted for this infrastructure we're putting in place. The dean, students, culture and climate people, the assistants, and also the wraparound coordinators and the team, because this was important to us. My sense, and I'm not in the schools every day, is I do talk to a lot of teachers, a lot of parents, and people are pretty impressed out there in the community, what's going on in the schools. It's a whole different climate, and we just started, you know, really putting it all together. So, I expect this to even be better once you really get going and doing your jobs even better in the future. I just had one question is, and what's good about this, you're engaging all the staff to help the students, and people seem pretty engaged in the Worcester Public Schools, the staff especially, so, which is important. And I just had one question on page 21 of the presentation. I don't know if you can put that back up. If you can, that's fine. Was it the attendance? No, it was the one with the...
Are you asking about the attendance?
No, it was... Yeah, that one.
Yes. The attendance slide, Casey? Slide 21. There you go.
Yeah, yes, this is it, and there's a similar stat. It's just no respect, comparing to 2017, then we went to the COVID years, so the numbers probably went down, then after COVID, it seems to be higher than pre-COVID, but it seems like it's going in the right direction, which is good. And this is probably, I would guess, a direct result of all the challenges from COVID. Is that sort of a simplified summary of that, you think? Yes?
Yes, and I think it's also a combination of all the breakthrough strategies that we're using to really keep students engaged in school, right? So, the restorative practices, the culture and climate teams are really doing a good job on increasing that sense of belonging so that students really feel part of this, have a sense of community in their schools, and they want to be part of their schools and be engaged, and that also makes an impact on attendance.
Well, thank you, and to sum it up and say thank you for the presentation, and this is so important, because on the city side, we have so many programs out in the community, and what you do in the Worcester Public Schools is going to really have a great impact in the community of City of Worcester, especially going forward in these challenging times. So, I much appreciate the effort, Superintendent, what you did, putting the team together. With that, we have Mr. Member McCullough, followed by Member Bean Carrier.
Thank you. First of all, thank you for the presentation. Who would have thought a presentation that included attendance and suspension information would be my favorite presentation that we've had so far this year, and got me the most excited and happy about things that are going on. I didn't have this written down, but when the mayor just asked about the attendance slide, it was something I had noticed also, and for many years, certainly, there was a lot of work done to increase attendance in the Worcester Public Schools, and COVID really has had the potential to really derail us in all other districts. And as the mother of two teenage boys, I know how each of them had handled the post-COVID times, and sometimes getting them to school is a really significant challenge, even if they have all the support in the world. So, to still be at the 91 to 92 range, I think, is really a true testament to the work of the district and trying to continue on that work that had been going on for a long time around attendance. So, thank you. I want to be really, I have a lot to say, but I'm going to try to keep it condensed because so much was already shared. I want to be thoughtful in saying that I think this is such a testament, and the mayor mentioned this as well, to the supports that have been put in place and the structure that has been put in place. So, I really want to thank all of the administration, all of you who are here, because that's so much work that is going on. We look at everything from the Q teams, the Q team supports down to the school level, and when we look at the multi-pronged approach to student support slide, I have certainly been a supporter, vehement supporter of the wraparound coordinators and how invaluable they are throughout the district, and I'm so happy that all schools have the opportunity to have them now. We have one at the Parent Information Center. I have been so incredibly impressed with the wellness rooms that I have seen, and I have not, I have not been to Sullivan to see their reset room, but love the model that was shared tonight and hearing how that is working in their district, and we know how important that mental health supports are. So, this multi-pronged approach is crucial. And now getting down to how it ties into, you know, and how it all ties into our vision of a learner and strategic plan, it's just so important. But I cannot say enough about the feedback I have heard throughout the community about the deans, the culture and climate assistants, and the climate and culture teams. I have had teachers, students, and administrators proactively tell me the difference that the dean and the climate and culture positions have made. One assistant principal told me he finds the climate and culture assistance to be one of the most impactful positions he's seen in his over 20 years of experience in the Worcester Public Schools. And when asking for feedback across our schools, because when I looked at this report, I said, "You know, I've heard so many good things, right? It's something that I'm hearing everywhere, but I want to reach out to people I know of all different positions at all different schools and get their feedback," because I was so happy to see the use of quotes directly from our student staff in this presentation. I think that's always so important, that we're getting feedback as things go and that we're hearing that feedback. But, you know, here, this is our job, right? A school committee member, we need to reach out and find out what's going on. We need to be in buildings as much as we possibly can, and we need to ask what is going on. And so, when asking for feedback across our high schools, I have asked, "Since adding climate and culture, have there been fewer fights in your building?" One assistant principal's response was, "Absolutely." She didn't need to elaborate anymore. A teacher at one high school told me that her dean of students is essential and knows the in and outs of all of the most at-risk students in their school, and that their climate and culture team has been used at their school, has been a huge, important presence, it's a constant presence, and there is always immediate response. One guidance counselor at another high school said, "While their team is still developing, the members epitomize climate and culture, and that their presence in the halls have absolutely reduced fights." And last but not least, a teacher at another high school shared the positive impact that their climate and culture team has made in their building, and the way that they are able to connect and relate with the kids, how they have helped prevent and diffuse situations, and how they have become such an important part of the fabric of their school community, frequently attending after-school events and sharing and showing support for the students within the community. And so many of these educators who have shared these types of things with me were actually ones that were extremely reluctant about these positions and said, "Oh, come on, what's this? A dean of students, a climate and culture assistant? What's this going to do? It's just another position. It's, you know, something else we're going to have to get used to and learn. Is it really going to do anything?" And within weeks, not months, weeks of these positions being instituted, the positive feedback was already being relayed to me and has continued. And I've seen it in action in the buildings when I've been there myself. I've seen how, and actually, some of the climate and culture people that were here tonight are some of those people I've seen in the halls, and see how they've related with the students, and see how they've been able to change that climate and culture. And knowing how it has impacted teacher morale, too, has been really valuable feedback. So, these supports from the wraparound coordinators to the climate and the culture assistants, and certainly impressive to hear the dean of students, yeah, dean of students from Worcester Tech, share all that he's doing, and down with the dean. I think that's great, the dinner that he's going to do with the families, and so really connecting more with the families is such a huge apartment, a part of the community engagement that we have been striving to attain, and, you know, just work that everyone in the system is doing, from our educators to our support staff, to the students, to the administration, and the community as a whole. So, I just, I really want to thank all of you who have been on board with getting these positions in place and continuing to see how they are positively impacting our students and our staff is just phenomenal. So, thank you.
Thank you. Member Bean Carrier.
Thank you. I have a few questions and a request to administration. On page 17, where they list the six different categories, dean of students, culture, climate assistants, and so on, there was a verbal description this evening that was graciously given to us. Is it possible that we, as school committee members, could receive dean of students and then a shot description or a summary of what they do in each of these positions? I think it's very important as we go further into discussions on not only our budget, but what is happening out in our community and what the benefits of these positions are. It would help all of us to have a small description of what it consists of. I know what it consists of, but certainly, when you attend a community meeting, at times you're asked a question, it would be nice to have something to refer to besides a title. So, I certainly would appreciate if administration could provide that to us.
Do you want to do the Friday letter, or is that fine?
However, it works for administration, that's fine.
Okay.
That would be, so I should put that in a motion. Sorry about that. I'll put it in a motion that we receive that information from administration at their convenience, whatever best way is possible. And if it's possible to receive it in a hard copy is what I would be looking for, because I would want to use that when I attend community meetings.
Sure.
There are times we are asked to reference them. I certainly feel as though this is all part of our education in moving forward in what direction we want our students to see us going in, and our staff believe that this is all improvements. The mental health support has been something that we have worked on for a number of years. The wraparound coordinators is something that we brought in, and we look at different directions. So, I think the prong effect has truly come into place when we look at the wraparound coordinators for this. But all of them are important, and I just wanted to touch on a couple of them. When we go to page 21, and this is in reference to the breakthrough strategies for attendance, unexcused absences, more than nine. We look at 2017 to 2018, we're at 31, but we're up to 46 and 45. So, we're getting close to half percent of our students are looking at nine or more unexcused absences. And we can go back to the COVID theory and say that that has affected us, and yes, we look at being absent from school a little differently since the COVID days. But what are we looking at as the major contributing factor for this? Because as we go forward, obviously, that's one of the numbers we would like to see improve. Is there something that the teams are looking at to improve that number?
I'm mad with Superintendent.
Specific to the unexcuse, but as we go through the categories, but that would be one of them at first.
Yes, thank you for the question. We are certainly looking at that. We are putting together attendance teams in schools to address that and to provide supports for the students to find out what it is that they need in order to attend school. So, we are looking at that, and we are looking to improve that through the attendance teams.
So, we do have something that would be, we would say that we're working on as far as trying to achieve better numbers than we presently have. And then, when we look at absent 10 days or more, where, again, we're hitting some high marks here, 53.5, 49.4. When we are accumulating these types of numbers with this many students, is it something that is an everyday discussion, or is this something we are putting together to work in the future on?
Through the chair? Yeah, it's something that we're going to focus on, and also, too, about what unexcused absences are, too. We have to really take in consideration of what's happening to our families because of, for example, and I'll put my principal hat on, in my years, you had a person who had to leave the country for something and stuff like that. So, it's a whole process, but that is on our radar to really develop a system to support those families, and then to support us with the unexcused part of that policy or procedure.
Because I know exactly what you said. I've had principals who I've spoken with who have said that that has a tremendous effect on the absentee record of our students, and it's not just one family in one school. It's across the board, and it does certainly hit, make the numbers rise. Are we providing at this particular time the opportunity, when it is possible, for Zoom classroom at all in those circumstances? Are we providing something when they come back to ensure that they are making up some of that work? Or we are still in the making? Or we are still in the making of making those decisions?
Uh, through the chair, yeah, we're still in the process of making those decisions. Uh, the Zoom thing is probably a legal thing too that we would have to discuss too. So, uh, it is in the process.
I, I would like to make a motion to be kept up to date on the possibility of the Zoom piece. Ironically enough, I, we all had to make adjustments when we went to Zoom. So, um, it's, uh, to, to me, it, it may be the easier avenue once we go through what the legal ramifications are of something like that. Instead of having them, uh, arrive back and then having to make work up and so on, because that can be difficult if they're supporting their families and they perhaps have a job after school, so you, they don't have the availability of having hours to work on, uh, projects that they would bring forward to say that I've made up for the last three weeks I was, you know, in attendance in our schools. And let's face it, um, there are a number of issues that surround a lot of the mental health and that does have an effect on the total of attendance also. When we speak to our families and what our vision is as we move forward, is, is part of the discussion, whether it be through, um, the gathering of our monthly meetings with the parents and staff, um, individual meetings that are held, do we include the attendance, good, bad, or indifferent of the student that is in front of them? Is that incorporated in a majority of our conversations as our staff is sitting with, um, different families, such as it was mentioned this evening that there'll be some type of dinners that they will be having at Worcester Tech? So they're going to be one-on-one? Even if there are five families there, in all five families, we luck out and, and they don't have an attendance issue? Is it still something that is brought up in the discussions?
Through the chair, if I could just respond to your last question about, uh, virtual learning. Per the Mas Desi, we are, we are not allowed to have virtual classes. So that is something that we cannot do, that we cannot provide for students who may leave the country.
Even if they're out of the country?
Even if they're out of the country.
Yeah, I wasn't sure is exactly what the scale was on that. I know that there are certain things that we have to look at, but wouldn't it be wonderful that after we were forced to figure out how we were going to do it for, to a year, to, to then say, by the way, you can't do that anymore, even though it might be beneficial to this group of students? That's truly unfortunate. Perhaps as school committee members, uh, we should speak to our delegation to make some decisions on what we can bring to them to have that change. Because I think that would be the best avenue to work with. And let's face it, everybody, um, works off of their phones and most likely, um, has a laptop, whether it's every family member or at least one family member will have one. To circle back to what I was asking is, um, when you're meeting with families, is the list of what you're going to discuss with them, does that list include attendance and, and, um, what scope is it discussed, even if there's not an issue with that student at that time? Is attendance on the list of what the discussion would include?
So it depends if it's an, it's excessive absences. So that would be the school adjustment counselor would certainly meet with the student and the family to determine that, what resources and supports that they need in order to first get caught up on their academics and also what additional resources they may need to, to access the curriculum and to arrive at school and be engaged in their classes.
I don't, I can't think of specifics at this particular time, but I would, um, like to make a motion to administration that, um, we put some thought into, uh, when we're meeting with families, um, whether it be a celebration, um, whether it be, um, to, is specific to one student or five families, but any time that we're having a, um, conversation with families in a s- small surroundings, I'm not looking at, you know, the gym, I'm talking small surroundings, that we include a list that would include discussing attendance. Because I, I really believe that if we keep bringing it up, it's going to be something that perhaps will become a second thought prior to, I have a headache today, so I'm not going to school, um, and the parent saying that's not going to work anymore, um, you know, you, you're going to have to get on that bus. Um, I think that may help us, um, and, and along the way in, in working with them, uh, providing the support that they may need. Because I think it is difficult, um, it, both parents and majority of families are working today. So it, it's hard to say what happens when that student is home. And a lot of, many times they're alone, they're by themselves. So the supervision is by a telephone or some people have cameras in their house now and their, uh, student is sitting there. So I think we need to, um, expand it a little more and, uh, figure out how we can certainly help them out with that. But thank you very much for your presentation tonight. I feel as though, um, a lot of good things are happening. We've worked for a number of years to have a lot of, um, engagement and, um, I think once we flipped the side of, uh, the COVID issues hitting us so hard that the difference of now coming back into the schools and finding out what families are doing and how families are doing, uh, certainly has made a difference. So kudos to you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, member Benanda.
Thank you, uh, for your presentation. I have a couple of questions. Uh, the first one is, um, as you talked about restorative practices. And so my question is, where are you with training? All staff in the schools are restorative practices and who, who will do the training?
Who says that one?
Uh, through the chair. Uh, yeah, so we are piloting those right now and we're in the pilot and stages, we'll say. Uh, but over the last summer, we had our, uh, culture and climate coaches that were trained in these restorative practices. So they will be the ones, uh, setting up the trainings for all staff. Right now, we, we, we really focused on our student adjustment counselors, uh, deans, our principals and the admin staff, but the, the goal is to get to all our staff.
Great, thank you. Uh, again, a problem that we've had for quite a few years here is the number of multirace Latino males and their suspension rates versus our white population. And I know it's a problem throughout our country, uh, but we really want to solve it here and we still haven't solved it. So what is the plan? Like, do you have a plan going forward, looking at the data on what we can do to solve it?
Ms. Azulosa?
So we do look at that data on a monthly basis, the academic supports team. We disaggregate the data to look and see what the trends are because the goal is to certainly narrow those gaps. And so our approach is right now with the restorative practices. It's really also, um, a little bit of that, um, working with teachers, right? And how do we build those positive, uh, relationship with students, um, focusing also on adult SEL as well, uh, and on behalf of narrowing those gaps.
Great, thank you. I do love the idea of the deans and you, when you described it, Kareem, you said that they supervise and they have a role in discipline. So my question on that is, are they admin certified then? Are they required since they have to supervise and they have to do discipline? Are they admin certified also?
Ms. Azulosa, oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Tatum?
Through the chair, yes, they are certified in administration.
In administration.
Correct.
Perfect. In the culture and climate assistance, I, you, uh, speak of them as first responders. So if there's something that's hap-, you know, they're in the hallway, they get to know the students, uh, they're first responders. What kind of training do they get? I saw in our, uh, weekly memo we got that they will next month be receiving some training in, um, I don't know, I guess they received bullying already, but they're going to receive some training on, um, CPI maybe? Could you do, tell us a little bit more about, uh, the training for the culture and climate assistance that they've already had? And then what's, uh, future training?
Mr. Tony?
Yep, uh, through the chair, yeah, see, that's correct. We've had, uh, like I mentioned before, uh, trainings in the past where some of them have attended. So we took a survey to see which ones have and we're going to provide a, a training for them with our culture and climate coaches, uh, with, uh, the restorative practice approach, uh, the mediation approach and the CPI, but not the physical restraint, the de-escalation language.
Oh, de-escalation strategies.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you. Um, also, I think there, so if there's somebody that would, might come in the middle of the year when the training's already happened, right? Will you be doing like a video one for them or providing some type of training for those coaches that come in the, for the, uh, climate and culture assistants that come in, like say, the middle of the year, once the training's already been done?
Ms. Azulosa?
Thank you. Through the chair. So yes, we have the culture, we have eight culture and climate, uh, coaches, uh, two for each quadrant that are fully trained. We're using the train the trainer model. So as we hire new staff, they will go into the quadrants, into the schools and train the culture and climate assistants.
Thank you, thank you. And could you explain, I, I asked several people and I was not able to get this definition. What is an undercover bullying team?
Ms. Azulosa?
So the undercover anti-bullying team approach is really restorative in nature and it teaches, uh, the aggressor. Uh, it's, it's, it's a little bit of a, uh, it kind of, I can give you a little bit of a, an example. It brings the aggressor, the target, and some peer influencers around in a circle. Uh, and it, um, it talks about the impact of the bullying on the target, right? And so the aggressor is not aware that they're in this circle and they are, are, are being told of what's happening, the harm that they're creating on the target. However, what it's doing essentially is they're learning empathy through the process, right? And so the, the hope is that, that they learn the harm that they are, um, impacting on the student and that moving forward, it reduces the, uh, the bullying behaviors.
So it's kind of like we used to do mediation.
Exactly.
Right, in, in school. So it's like a mediation, somewhat like a mediation.
Through the chair, somewhat, but it's not a situation in which you have the per, the aggressor and the victim.
Just the two.
Ex- correct. Um, because that outs the victim and, and that's not what we want. Um, so, so it's different in that manner.
So that sounds like that's a, uh, great thing to use, but that, obviously, it does require skill in order to have that happen. So who actually gets trained and who does the training on that?
Yeah, so we had some consultants come in last year who are fully trained. Uh, and so they trained our, uh, culture and climate coaches and a lot of our district staff. And then they in turn, because we developed the train the trainer model, they trained our school adjustment counselors that performed that with the students.
Great, thank you. My next question, uh, is looking at the suspension data. So I think what's missing there, and I'd, I'd like to request that we also have a list of the incidents, the discipline incidents that happened. So that shows the suspension, what happened, but it doesn't give us an idea of the incidents. And we all know that we have to report that, uh, to DESI. We're weekly putting that into our computers. So it's just a matter of, uh, providing what's already in there by groups, right? Uh, the total number of incidents, I think is important to look at versus suspensions because that, you may have done other things, obviously you did, uh, instead of suspensions. So I think it's important for us to look at that sheet that we all fill in and we have to set, we, we know that's up to date, uh, to DESI. So I'm going to actually make a motion that we, school committee is able to, uh, receive the report of the incidents for this school year.
Thank you for the question through the chair. Um, we actually have, we just got that yesterday and I can let you know that, um, back in twenty-eight, and you will, we'll get to this to you in writing as well, but in twenty-eighteen to twenty-nineteen, we had nearly twenty thousand, uh, discipline incidents. Um, it went down, uh, slightly in twenty-twenty-one and then we're down, uh, to half of that this year. So we're down to about ten thousand this year for discipline.
That's still, that's still a lot of incidents, right?
Yeah, it's half, half of what it was three years ago.
Yes, that's good progress. Could we though see that on what were the specific incidents? You know, how, how, in the policy book, they have the list of what the incidents are and DESI requires us to also do it by group. That's just, that's a motion. And the last thing I wanted to ask you is a very important question. And that is, uh, not knowing the cuts that we have to have with, with the budget and knowing that with the union, we have a reduction in force policy, right? So usually the, depending upon the area, but some of the newest people in sometimes are the ones in reduction in force, unfortunately, that we have to cut. Um, what, what is the impact of the budget cuts going to have on climate and culture? And you might be going to speak about that in the May meeting. Um, but I, I think that's really important for us to think about also. Uh, if this work is, you know, starting to show some breakthroughs, what does that leave us?
Member Superintendent?
Through the chair. So, um, two parts to that response. One, we will be bringing that back at the next, uh, report to the superintendent when I go over the budget prioritization. And then just to clarify, reduction in force and the various, as you, you phrased it, um, the last person in is the first out, that is by category. So the, the climate and culture assistants and/or the deans, it would be, um, that would not be the same as perhaps a reduction in force for a classroom teacher. So it's not, it doesn't cut across the board. It's not that simple. But we will be bringing, um, the plan or the prioritization back, uh, next school committee meeting.
Thank you. Uh, member Johnson?
Thank you. Um, through the chair, thank you to administration for this, um, report. Um, you know, I, I just want to, and I'll be brief, um, I just want to kind of thank, um, the, the previous school committee as well on kind of the work that we did on approving the dean of students and the climate and culture and, um, because it was an unknown. We, we didn't know what we were doing. It was a new, um, out-of-the-box thinking, new, new thing that we'd never done here in the district. And we took a chance on it and it's, it's paying off. And I would tell you that every, and I've spoken to the principal, deans, and climate and culture people at Dougherty, North, Burncoat, and South. I haven't spoken to, um, Worcester Tech yet, but I was speaking with Ms., um, member Mailman who, who, um, said, um, Worcester Tech as well. I mean, they, they are ecstatic about what's going on in their schools. And one principal said to me at Burncoat, assistant principal at Burncoat said, it now has given him the ability to go out and do his job as an administrator with the teachers and doing that supervision, which is very important, which I think really was missing, um, missing before. I just, I, I have one question and I think I know the answer, I'm going to ask it. So coming out of COVID, we have went, we went online, we went to the Google Classroom, we did all this other stuff. And coming out of COVID, my guess is with the attendance, due to the fact that a lot of the schoolwork is being posted online, that we're seeing an increase of kids maybe missing school, but they're still able to go online and access the curriculum because a lot of their assignments are posted on the Google Classroom. I have a daughter in high school, so I know, um, and I have a son actually in elementary school and they're doing it in elementary school. So if they're not in school, my kids are still able to access their classroom work and pass it in, although they might be home from school, whether it's sick or whatever. Could that also be contributing over the past couple of years that we have, uh, increase in kids being absent?
Member Superintendent?
Through the chair. Attendance is, is, it's complex. So I would say that would be one piece of it. I would say typically, um, and in San Bernardino, so I'm apologizing for using this, but I keep going back to, um, when we were there, we had the same attendance issues, right? And our, um, our, our director of positive youth development, she talked about three categories of students that tend to be absent, those who are chronically ill because, and Those who are chronically ill, and maybe we need to be offering supports for home and hospital. Those are completely disengaged in school because school is boring to them, right? So that's the academic side of it. And then those who don't feel safe in school for different reasons. And, and so I would say, if a student feels like, "I can just go online and do the work," they're not engaged in school, right? It's not rigorous enough for them. But each one of those three buckets have to, they need a different approach to addressing it, right? So it takes more time to dig into what the student actual need is, doing that with the families, and then actually meeting the need based off of the root cause. So it's complex, and, and it's not simple for, and it, and it's more than just, I mean, yes, we want our families to know how important attendance is, but when children are excited about going to school, they will get themselves to school, right? And those who aren't for different reasons won't. So I would say that is one piece of it.
Thank you. So again, so I would just finish with, again, I thank you for bringing this to us. I thank you all for the work that you're doing. I want to thank the teachers, the educators, the school adjustment counselors, everyone that's in the school that is doing the work and doing this work with our kids. I think it's making a huge impact on what's going on in our schools, and I'm excited to see things moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Mailman?
Just a couple of quick things. On page 15, the out-of-school risk ratios, could we have that over, you know, the last five years, seven years, something like that? And are those, can you tell me what they're going to say?
Ms. Salozza?
Through the chair. You want then in the future, not, obviously, not tonight, right?
Well, not tonight. But I want to understand the past seven years.
Absolutely. And that particular ratio.
How we're doing.
Yes, absolutely.
And, and the only other, thank you. And the only thing I wanted to say that is, having listened to Ruth for many, many years, I hope that Ruth is hearing that we are putting the data out there, that nobody in this room is saying, "We got it all covered."
No.
That we got a long way to go, but we are looking at it, we're acknowledging it, we're looking for sources, we're, I, I try to put myself in Ruth's, and I hope that Ruth feels hope about what's happening in our system right now. That's what I'd like to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So again, appreciate, and I just want to thank you for the presentation. And the one thing we talked about in the superintendent was, really for several years, about bringing communications, promoting the Worcester Public Schools. And I liked the video there, I liked the presentation, so I'm also, as using as an example, when we cut it down, you actually could promote the Worcester Public Schools and what you're doing with the video that you were showing, something to think of and put on the website. So this is what we're asking for, and it's coming to fruition, so much appreciated. Okay, thank you very much. So we're going to move on to the agenda. Patriots pick in 30 minutes, so what do you think? Okay, next one up is report of the Standing Committee of Finance, Operations, and Governance.
Thank you. On March 4th, the Standing Committee on Finance, Operation, and Governance met. The first item of business was GB 4-40, the annual report of OPEB or Other Post-Employed Benefits Trust Fund. City auditor Robert Sterns gave an overview of the presentation, and there were no questions. And on a motion of to approve, on a roll call of four to zero, the motion passes. The response of the administration, the following items were taken together. GB 2-92.12, request that the administration provide quarterly reports regarding building, maintenance, to include timeframes on when work will begin and concluded. GB 3-159.1, response from administration to create a finance and operations focus on building repairs and maintenance for the coming year, similar to the focus on transportation. GB 4-9, request that administration provide a report with the updates for the improvement for the Roosevelt School transportation and parking issues, including timeframe for work to be completed in the spring of 2024. And CMP 3-4.1 by Nathan Cummings with recommendation on changes to the Roosevelt parking. Mr. Allen introduced Mr. Eikonen and Mr. Hacker, and they presented the facilities update. Mr. Eikonen gave staffing update for positions currently open and announced transfer selection process for junior custodians. They discussed the benefits of replacing Operations Hero and how that is working, and the pilot was successful, so they are actually rolling out sooner to all schools. Mr. Eikonen noted that capital projects are progressing on schedule with the new Dougherty Memorial at 84% complete, and that was over a month ago, so it's even more complete now. The district-wide Honeywell HVAC project, which remains ongoing. The Burnco High School, which is entering the eligibility period with the mass association of school buildings, and the Burnco Middle School Statement of Interest as well. Projects were described across the district, talking about ADA compliance upgrades and replacement projects that are needed throughout the district, highlights of summer projects, including the Roosevelt School parking lot, McGrath School and Tattletick School flooring replacements, Worcester Technical High School parking garage repairs, Burnco Middle School ADA updates, Lincoln Street School restrooms, Norbeck Fire Pump Replacement, and the Worcester Technical High School Advanced Manufacturing Relocation Project. There was discussion about future products, projects, including the Worcester East Middle School window projects that will take place over two summers. It's a $7 million grant that was awarded to DESI, I mean, to WPS by DESI. It's still in the study phase, but will be commencing the design phase shortly. Facilities project status reports will be updated quarterly. Also upcoming is the Forest Grove and North High School chiller replacements, both of which have long lead times of 40 to 50 weeks, and that's due to material shortage. I get clarification from Mr. Allen regarding the number of vacant positions, and also noted that we have more vacant, he noted that we have more vacant positions than we do applicants. And also clarification regarding the Burnco Middle Stair Project. Member Biancaria made comments regarding the Roosevelt School project getting underway and the Worcester East Middle School window project, and asked if the union has been contacted in order to potentially fill some of our vacant positions, and the administration was going to look into that. Member Biancaria asked for a report on the number of junior custodians employed by the WPS, and on a motion to accept and file, along with member Biancaria's motions, while holding the 2-92.12 quarterly report, sorry, I believe I said that correctly, roll call of four to zero, the motion passes. We did suspend the rules to allow public comment from Mr. Gordon Davis, who showed up to the meeting, and he requested information on when Chandler Elementary School will be updated, and where he could find a list of schools scheduled for update, and how to get the list. Mr. Davis gave his information to the clerk, and the clerk did provide him with information. GB 4-6, response from the administration, a report on the rental costs for all buildings, including the original rental for bus yard and increases and dates of increase, include the cost for all additional build-outs at the bus yard, for other departments, and the cost of the gas station for the buses. Mr. Allen reviewed the information, he submitted for this request, the links were provided. He noted the lease with the YMCA for Jacob Hyatt Gymnasium and Parking Lot will continue through June 2025 at a cost of $53,000. Chandler Elementary will terminate its lease with the Y on June 30th, 2024. Parking lot leases for the teachers at Webster Square Plaza for Gates Lane and Goddard Elementary will not be renewed. New locations for transportation are now at Northeast Cut-off and Pullman Street, which is the fuel-only site, and have a 20-year lease. Nutrition offices are also located at Northeast Cut-off, but their portion of lease is paid through their revolving fund. I asked about the addition of a fuel site, the addition of the fuel site on Pullman Street. Mr. Allen noted that it was always part of the project, but because of environmental restrictions, it could not be located at Northeast Cut-off property and was subsequently located on Pullman Street. Member Biancaria asked Mr. Allen about the electric buses that are proposed for WPS. He noted that we are not expecting to receive them until 2025, and that all gas for buses located at Templeman Street, again, is due to environmental restrictions at Northeast Cut-off. I made a motion to accept and file, on a roll call of four to zero, the motion passes, and on a roll call of four to zero, the meeting was adjourned.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve. Question, member Benanda?
Yes, a couple of questions. One, I was on the cost of the bus yard. So from what I'm gathering here, it's about $2 million a year. Mr. Allen's not here today, right?
Yes, he is, he's here.
Is there a corner hiding?
You can direct your comments right to the chair, please.
Good, yes, through the chair. So is it around $2 million a year for the building? Through the chair.
Mr., Mr. Allen?
Through the chair, that's correct.
Oh, good. And then we would add that, the cost of the personnel, cost of the fuel, and the cost of repairs. I'm just wondering if we can get that in a future report? I can put that as an item.
Through the chair, that'll be in the FY '25 budget book.
Oh, it'll be in there, which, is that what we get in June?
Yes, it's in June.
Okay. My other question is, I was concerned about the lease for Gates Lane Parking and Goddard School, and I was wondering, where, where will that, the staff park now, since we, it says that the lease is going to be ended this year?
Through the chair. So through our budget process, working with building principals, we had them identify, as you'll see in next week's presentation or report to the superintendent, areas, different priority areas of where to keep, and some of the rental costs were suggestions from building principals of where we could save some money. So we took that directly from the building principals.
My last question is on the Worcester Alternative School. How long is that contract? Is that a one-year contract?
Through the chair, that's a three-year lease.
Three-year lease. And we're in year one.
Through the chair, that's correct.
Correct, thank you.
Okay, so, so the motion would approve the report, and also I fulfill the motion to approve the motions that were made with the previous presentation to superintendent. You can take those collectively. All those in favor, opposed, so ordered. Thank you. Okay. Next, we have approval of the grants and other finance items. Unless anybody has any questions, we can do a roll call. Roll call.
Member Alvarez.
Yes.
Member Biancaria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. Okay, next is to, oh, is to share any discussion on the Worcester evaluation of the gifted program, what plans are in place to develop a fully functional program for gifted students. The motion is to accept and to file. Is that fine with everyone? Okay, all those in favor, opposed, so ordered. Next is to request report on the number of hearings for discipline policy violations and the number of students placed in the term settings. Member Benanda? I'm sorry, that's, that's a response, but do you want to speak?
Yes, through the chair. I just would like to ask, which I already asked already with the report, is that we could just get the number of incidents, so then we could look at the number of students that went to Woodward Day, and understand the connection between the incidents and the students that went.
A separate report? Okay. All those in favor, opposed, so ordered. The motion is to accept and to file. All those in favor, opposed, so ordered. Next is to get a presentation on the modern classrooms project, including teacher and student feedback, and those participating. And is everybody else set with that? We can have a motion to accept and to file. Next is request administration provide the cost of hiring all culture and climate specialists, and number in each school, and the training provided. Do we get that tonight, sort of, but, member Benanda?
No, I think we're all set on that, thank you.
Okay, so we can accept and to file. All those in favor, opposed, so ordered. Member Mailman? Provide data on application programs in schools, this information is known. For example, for middle, secondary, and sixth grade programs, provide sending school data for applications for lottery-accepted students and actual enrollment for September 2024 class, for elementary programs. School provide ZIP Code data for applications on lottery-accepted students and actual enrollment for September 2024 class, for the same programs. Please include ZIP Code, or sending school data, low-income, English language, and special ed accepted students, 2024, 23, and 22. Member Mailman?
I just wanted to have an item that was as long as the finance report. And when I read it myself after it came out, I thought, "My God, how much coffee did you have, Sue, before you wrote this thing?" But actually, the, the data that was provided for the Goddard Scholars is what I'm looking for. And I saw, after the lottery for the vocational programs last week, that we had, we had the data for Worcester Tech about where everybody came from and the demographics, but we didn't have it for the other vocational programs. So, and I'm sure this is probably what you're looking for when you guys try to put together through the chair, your, you know, your recommendations for changes to admissions to different programs. So I would ask for that consistent data across all of these programs, which includes each of the vocational programs separately, and then also on the elementary side, our dual-language admissions program, and Worcester Arts Magnet, and I always forget the other elementary school that has admissions policy, but Jacob Hyatt, is it?
Yeah.
Yeah, the magnets, anybody that's admissions, this kind of data, I think, is the data we should be looking at for all the programs. So that's what the motion means with all those words. Thank you.
That's the administration. All those in favor, opposed, so ordered. Okay. You can see the approval of adding the following to the agreement, Chapter 74, Programs, Instructors Hired for '74 Programs in Comprehensive High Schools, we have on the same requirements as Staff Hired for the Technical Vocational Programs. So, member Benanda?
Yes, through the chair. So this item came about after, during our tour of Dougherty, when I was speaking to Principal Staley. And it really referred to the craft manufacturing program. There are only two in the state. One is Fall River, and then the one would be at Dougherty. It rarely requires a certain type of person that has a wide, a wide knowledge of so many things that you would have to know if you were to run manufacturing, or to be in charge of a complete facility. And he does have a few people that have applied, and it's a timely thing with them, because it's such a unique program, that if they lose the two people that have applied, because of a rule, and I was just talking to you, Q, she said she would come and explain, she's been exploring it, state rule regarding if you were applying for a chat, a vocational school, you can get that position with a two-year degree in associate, but if you are applying to a high school comprehensive, right, something along that line, you have to have the full bachelor's degree. So she said they're still exploring it. I just brought it up because it's so timely for the hiring of these people.
But the, Dr. Here, the issue I'm having with this is that this is subject to union negotiations, is that correct?
I'm going to explain it this way. So as I understand the question, through the chair, we are working with the union to be proactive, because part of union negotiations, it was really about working with Worcester Tech in general. But being proactive, we recognize and realize that we need to also work with our Chapter 74 programs. So we started that work last summer, just to be really proactive. But to answer the question now that I have some context, the hiring requirements are listed by the state. So that particular program, the state does set out, they have 45 recognized programs at the state level for vocational programs, and each one has a different set of requirements based on what the needs are. So that particular one, I believe, and I can get you more information through what's happening, or I can bring it back here, is I believe you need a minimum of a high school diploma, five years of experience, or an associate's degree, as well as passing the vocational communications assessment. Now, I'm going off the top of my head, so I might have missed one or two, but I can get you all of those requirements. So I think there was some miscommunication with Chapter 74, and how we can hire folks who are coming into our vocational programs, or Chapter 74 programs. So I can definitely get you more clarity on that. But we are, again, with the relationship we have with AEW, working really hard to be proactive, to make sure that all of our students have access to the things that they need, want, and continue to explore.
Okay, so we can, okay, get your answer, we'll get a report. Member Superintendent?
Through the chair. So I just want to be clear on what this ask is. So what we will be bringing back is what the requirements are for DESI, not in relation to our collective bargaining agreement, but what the DESI requirements are, so that everyone understands those. Yes? Okay.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
We can file this one, and get the report back on DESI requirements. All those in favor, opposed, so ordered. Next is to discuss the possible impact of '25 cuts in reference to the current House budget. Member Benanda?
I did attach documentation to this. This is the House budget that came out, I think it was the week. I did attach documentation to this, this is the House budget that came out, I think it was the week before the school vacation, and, uh, you can see all the cities and towns in Massachusetts for this. So, i- in looking at Worcester, it appears that if, if this budget passes, uh, there'd be another 19 million, right, $897,765 for Worcester. What I didn't know is I had, the question I had, I thought Mr. Allen had said something about, that we were allowed to borrow money from this year's SOA for the 24 budget? I wasn't sure if that's exactly what you said. So, could you just, um, explain, if this was to pass, would Worcester get that 19 million? And then, we would certainly be in a much better state, and we wouldn't be short that 22 million.
Mr. Allen?
Through the Chair, the House budget has a technical correction to low-income students, and we're scheduled to receive, if the House budget becomes the final state budget, an increase of $337,000 above what the governor has proposed. However, I also want to point out, in the House budget, there's also a significant increase in charter school tuition assessment. So, the amount of new money to Worcester, if this would be the final state budget amount, is only $160,000. So, we'll have to see what the Senate does, and then the final state budget through our budget process as to what the final amount is. I think we've included a description of that in the last, what's happening, uh, the week just before school vacation. So, the amount for Worcester is only a $337,000 increase in Chapter 70, but it's mostly offset through charter school tuition assessment increase as well.
Thank you, and, uh, look forward to your bu- budget presentation coming up, and, uh,
Just a quick question.
I'm sorry, I thought you were done.
Through the Chair.
Apologies.
Uh, just a quick question. I also saw that, I think Worcester was gonna get some extra funding because of the mistake that was made on the low income. Is, that was around 300-something thousand, right?
Mr. Allen?
Through the Chair, that is what is in the House budget, the 337,000. The low income, uh, I'm sorry, the inflation adjustment that we had asked for, that we had advocated for at the Legislative Breakfast, is not included in the House budget, and it, I, I'm told it is also not going to be in the Senate version of the budget. And, it is my understanding, the Mass Teachers Association, who is one of the supporters of, um, that language, um, has advocated that it be implemented for FY26. So, even they have recognized that it's not going to be in the FY25 budget, and is advocating it to be adopted for the FY26 budget.
Okay. Thanks again, and look forward to your presentation, Mr. Allen, I'm glad you're at the helm when it comes to the budget, and much appreciated. A lot of confidence, and make sure it's done right. Okay. So, refer that to the budget, are those in favor, oppose, so ordered. Next is to request that school committee members refrain from any use of social media during so, school committee meetings via cell phones or tablet, including texting or email use. Member Roy?
Okay, in the interest of time here, I'm gonna try to be as quick as possible. First, I shouldn't have included tablets in my item, as we all use them, as we know, to keep track of the agenda and the attachments that we have to see during the meetings. Just so you know, I've heard from many constituents, taxpayers, parents, teachers, and some paraprofessionals who watch or have been, who have been in attendance at school, watch on TV, or have been, who have been in attendance at school committee meetings. And they've noticed that some people use their phones, um, and are texting, as far as they know. And it makes them feel like they're out of the dark, and what is being said, that can't be shared with the public during the meetings. So, got me thinking, and, I mean, we are elected officials, we receive a stipend, and I think we owe it to our colleagues and the public to give 100% attention without distractions, meaning phones, um, to the proceedings of our meetings. Now, let's be realistic, I know we all have families and emergencies happen, um, and there's no problem with having the phone out in case you have, you know, a sick child, or an elderly person, or any kind of emergency, that you can have access to it. I just think we need to be more cognizant of, um, you know, using our phones that aren't related to the meeting. Um, and on my last note, I've done some research on this. This is becoming, as they said in one article I read, an epidemic among meetings and public meetings. Um, and one thing that caught my eye is the State Attorney General's Office, which oversees the Massachusetts Open Meeting Law, offers some very specific guidance on its website. Elected officials should avoid the use of electronic devices during meetings to discuss matters within the jurisdiction of the public body, if the text can't be seen by members of the public at the meeting. So, I just want to make it known that we should be very careful about using our phones during meetings.
Uh, Member, uh, McCullough?
Motion to file.
Motion to file. Member Mailman?
Just concurring with, um, the motion to file, but I, um, this, I, I, through the Chair, to the Chair, um, this is, um, so what happened in our little city of Worcester in the world is, we had a meeting, um, a month or two ago, and we had someone taking pictures of, um, peoples, not, not school committee people, people in the balcony, and people in the audience, and somebody came in from a group that is well-known on social media. And what I disturbingly learned about that group is that that group was actually formed by one of the members of our school committee. And so, this item is not just coming up from the goodness of our hearts and the goodness of everybody having problems with cell phones. It's coming up because we had a specific issue with, um, a particular social media host, again, who was organized originally with someone that's on the school committee now. And I just think that is, when I got on the school committee, and I've been involved with this, you know, coming to meetings for many years, Mayor, for you and before you, and I have never seen anything like that. And it was stunning to me, and, um, I, I think that, so I just want to say that out loud, because I think that we are, we are going to be credible with the items we put on the table, because they're here for the right reasons. I think of the work that was done by this, um, staff and the projects today, and all the reports we've heard, and that's the real work, and this is a game. And I just, um, I, I just think that the game should not be played, and I'd ask the colleagues at the table that are playing the game to stop playing the game, and that we, um, get back to the work at hand, and support this administration, and call on this administration as needed to, um, for more rigor and everything else that we've talked about. But this is not, this is a phony item, it is, um, cons, it's, there's all conspiracy stuff behind it. I would also alert the person that was on that original founding committee to maybe look at some of the language that was filed on a Mass Live report this week that talked about a dual-language program, and it was horrific language about our dual-language programs. And, the person that was the, you know, perpetrator in this silly incident a number of, a month ago, said that the reason we elected some people is so that we would get rid of dual-language programs. And I hope like heck that we are all here with the, the, the spirit and the hope to put forward the programs that we've heard about, and that we are not here to tear down the work of our multilingual learners or anybody else in this system. So, thank you for listening to me, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Member Guardiola?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, so I, when I read this, you know, I took some time and really kind of, uh, took it in to see what, you know, really what the meaning behind this, so, but, I will say, I, I do take some issue with this item. Well, I truly believe having respect for our fellow committee members, our administration, the public, I do not believe that having technology in front of us will infringe on that. We are all professionals here, we all ran for these seats because we want to do something good, we want to do good work that needs to be done, uh, to ensure we have great school environments for our students, teachers, administrators alike. We all have families at home that sometimes require us to have phones near us in case of emergencies. I know that I cannot be the only person that has a child at home or a family member with disabilities that need to be able to access us in case of emergencies that, that happen at home. In my personal case, I have an 18-month-old, as well as a disabled parent at home. I, again, truly believe in respecting others, but I do not believe that the colleagues near me, next to me, are skimming through social media during these meetings. Lastly, we all have tablets and cell phones, and we continue to move to environmentally friendly options like going paperless. You know, all of the agendas and package items that are sent to us via email, uh, are sent to us because we don't want to print out nine, 40-to-50-page documents each time that we meet. We also have the ability to search back to previous items that may be back on the floor. I, in good faith, cannot support this item, but I am confident that our professionalism will continue. So, I guess my big question, and it's not a question for anybody else, but just something to mull over, how are we gonna be able to police this? I take my notes on my iPad, I can't see a real way of monitoring this, and therefore, I will not be supporting this, and will be, uh, supporting, motion to file.
Okay. Anybody else? Member Roy?
First of all, I'd like to address my colleague, as I don't really know what she's talking about, um, as far as being a founding member of whatever you think I am a founding member of. Um, and for another thing, um, my intentions were just for, for number one, our own protection, you know, for, for, to ward against public records requests, um, and just to be cognizant that the public is gonna perceive us as 100% committed, which I am 100% committed to this committee. Um, as far as the Mass Live article goes, I, I have not been privy to see that.
You should read it then.
Okay, hang on, wait, hang on.
But anyway, um, my motion was to approve and file, and I would like to take that vote, or send it to, um, Finance Operations and Governance for further discussion.
Okay, thank you. Okay. I know we had this discussion on the City Council side a few years ago, we had an incident there, and, uh, I think it went over pretty well, is that people do need their phones, whether it be for personal reasons, and nobody should be texting each other in any business that's before the body. And I think, I don't think everybody does that, um, so hopefully that doesn't happen, because she's absolutely right, it's, it is a violation of the open meeting law. So, uh, the first that takes precedent is, the first on the motion is a motion to file takes precedent, so take that vote first, if that fails, we'll take the vote, uh, on the item itself. Okay. Roll call.
Member Alvarez?
A yes vote would be a motion to file, and no vote would be not to file it.
Yes. Member Biancaria?
No.
Member Benanda?
No.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Member Jo, Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
No.
Mayor Petty?
Yes, okay. Motion to file. The next item that we have, request that the administration provide the number of employees on paid administrative leave this school year, as well as the title and the dollar amount. Member Biancaria?
Thank you. To administration, through the Chair, uh, what the ask is on this would be that, um, we receive the number of employees on paid administration, uh, leave, um, as well as the dollar amount. I would be more than happy to remove title. I clearly understand that if it is one person in one position, then it's evident that the name is associated with that title, so we certainly don't need that. Uh, my concern with this is, and the efforts put forward, would be to make sure that, you know, our teacher ratio per student is taken into account, and of course, um, the full-out budget, um, were my concerns in this particular item.
Okay, so the amendment is to just say, to give us total number of employees on paid leave along with the total dollar amount?
Correct.
As amended. Counsel, oh, Counsel, Member Mailman?
Could we also, as an amendment or a, a separate item, could we also include the last, um, six years of that data?
Okay.
Thank you.
Is that fine? So, as amended, six years worth. Okay, motion is to, uh, refer to the administration. Are those in favor, oppose, so ordered. Next item is request administration via communication, email, text, phone calls, when altercations occur in the schools, providing a location of school sites and summary of altercation. Uh, Member Biancaria?
Thank you. Through the Chair, to administration. What I'm concerned with is, we had a terrific discussion tonight about the services that we offer, um, which I certainly shows that we are moving, uh, and, and we continue to move. We had so many years of effort with keeping our schools safe. And we look at the culture and climate, we can call it what we wish. Bottom line is, keeping our schools safe, making sure our kids are attending school, and, um, making sure our staff feels as though they're comfortable and feel safe also. When I look at, uh, the communication we receive, I, um, certainly, uh, realize that when 911 is called, we do receive as school committee members a quick summary of what had occurred at a particular school site. I will forego mentioning any sites, um, but recently, I've received notifications from a variety, uh, whether it be staff, personal friends, uh, people that are acquaintances, that have referred to altercations that have occurred in schools. I realize that 9/11 is not called, um, however, what I am interested in is not only the, the number of altercations that are occurring, but what are we doing, um, with our kids? Because when you see these altercations, whether it be on a, uh, video that somebody has, a picture of somebody has, it seems that the altercation is occurring, and then we have 100 students standing around, they're all filming it. But what they're doing is, unfortunately, we've brought it to the level of they're sharing on, they're taking pictures, they're, um, adding to what is occurring during that altercation. So, when everything settles down, in the alter, in the people that, um, were involved in the altercation, uh, the students are obviously separated, and they're going back to their classrooms. What is the protocol that we are looking at, um, to help our students realize that taking pictures of that and sharing it on is not the appropriate behavior? Not just the fact that the students who had the altercation are going back and forth, but the students that are standing there enforcing that this is entertainment. And, it's not happening, um, repeatedly. All I'm asking is, when we look at this, what are our protocols? Wha- what are we doing to help realize that this behavior is not the behavior we want to see? Whether it's a large altercation or a small one. It's, um, sort of, the expression tonight that was, um, repeated, uh, a number of times is, you know, reset, restart, review. So, um, I, I'm asking administration, how are we working with this?
Now, Mr. Superintendent?
Through the Chair, so, we heard tonight from our, um, Dean of Students at Worcester Tech, and he spoke to, um, all the, everything that started, it's all this school year, right? So, it's new, as he said. And so, as this, as the overall school culture with time shifts, those type of behaviors will decrease. They will never completely go away, I would, that, they're teenagers, right? And, and social media is, um, it's their, it's their vehicle, at least now. We don't know what the future generations will look like. But that is part of the work, is, is teaching the students how, when you do this type of thing, what does that look like for your school? This actually isn't positive for your school, this makes your school look like it's not a safe place to be, right? That's a learned behavior that we need to teach in different ways. So, that becomes part of the work of the Dean of Students, the school council, this, uh, the student council, and the overall culture of the school, it goes, goes hand in hand.
So, um, are the altercations that- So are the altercations that occur in different sites throughout our school system, are they documented even though the 911 is not utilized?
Ms. Superintendent?
Through the chair. So the schools document situations and they have it in our student information system.
So is it something that at some point in time, we look at what we have accumulated over the last year? Because what I'd like to do is, when we look at our budget, is to reinforce the idea that safety is a big factor in our schools. And I have firmly believed from day one that if you're not safe, you're not going to have teaching, you're not going to have learning. So when we look at our budget, I'd like to shift a few dollars around, I'm sure, in different areas. One of them being keeping our schools safe, making sure that we are not looking at the Dean of Students and deciding that a school doesn't need that. So my idea would be that we have some number for our middle and high schools that is it five during the year, is it 10 during the year, is it... How is it working? And whether it be a report that we receive, I was hoping prior to our discussions with the budget, but if that isn't possible, then I would say, as we move into discussing it budget in June, that we receive some information so we have a general idea of how it's working and what schools perhaps may need additional help in those areas. And that's the only way we really know it, by getting some idea of the numbers.
Ms. Superintendent?
Through the chair. I think what you're asking for, Member Biancaria, is very similar to what Member Benanda was is asking for, which is the incidents and what students have been... The incidents of different behavior incidents. So what we can do is, we can bring that all together in a report for you. And then I do want to assure you that we are not bringing a recommendation to cut any of our Dean of Students. We've actually found a way to... The recommendation will include reallocating some existing staff to provide even more targeted behavioral supports to our schools by quadrants as well as maintaining our deans and expanding them. So I want to assure you that we see it's working. We do not plan on cutting that because we agree with you. We need our children in school. We need them safe so that we can ensure that they're learning. So we're finding a way to be able to do and and not or. But we will bring a report to you that includes what you're looking for because it sounds very similar to what Member Bian... It's so hard to say the two names that close to each other together. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that information, Superintendent. I certainly do appreciate it. And I just want to add in that when we look at what we do for protocol and what our responses are and so on, I just hope that we can take into consideration, and we do have something, whether it be under the entitlement... the title of bullying, somewhere along the lines of, as a student, you are responsible and you are accountable for what you're doing on your social media as far as bringing these pieces forward. And being someone who worked on, not only in the summer programs, but for Worcester Public Schools for a number of years, it's... Altercations are not new. It's just the idea that even if you know that they're never going to go away and you're always going to have some issues at some sites, looking at it differently now than we did five years ago, 10 years ago, 15 years ago, because of the fact that we have the ability to take this picture immediately, which sometimes can be beneficial and, you know, in this case, I just don't think it is. But that does occur, so we have to look at it a little differently. Thank you for your time.
So this item will amend it to ask us for a report of the instances and the protocols involved.
Correct.
Okay.
That's fine. Thank you.
And Member Johnson?
Through the chair. Again, I think, and I didn't say anything earlier because you went through it too fast for me, I missed it, but we've already had some of these discussions on incidents in schools. We talked about what weapons are in school, drugs are in school, how many kids are suspended, what schools they're going to, who's being expelled. I mean, we keep rehashing the same thing. I'm a little frustrated and I think we continue, or some continue, to try to smear this picture of our district being this out-of-control district with altercations and incidents and weapons and drugs and suspensions and all this other stuff. And it seems like it's just some smear campaign out there that we're just an unsafe district and our kids are like out of control and falling through the cracks and not getting educated. And that is far from the truth. And to be quite honest with you, I think some of this negativity around here stinks because I can't continue to sit here as a elected body on a school committee trying to move this district forward. On the reason why I was elected to do so, to ensure that our kids are moving forward, our district's moving forward, they're getting the academic success that they need, they're safe, they're learning, they have good character, and we're building on the core values that we set forth here and trying to work with the superintendent and her administration on moving the district forward on a vision of the learner that we put forth, the goals of the district, the goals of the superintendent. That's what I'm here for. For the past four months, this has been going on and it's very frustrating to continuously hear this on a weekly basis. So I just want to put that out there that we have a very good district. Is it perfect? No, it's not. No other district is perfect. But I could tell you this, we're not calling the national guard here saying that our schools are unsafe. That is not going on. Our schools still need a lot of work. They're going to continue to need work five years from now, 10 years from now, or whatever. But as long as we're moving forward, that's what's important. I just can't sit around and continue to listen to some of these narratives on all these things that are going on that got schools out of control. That's not the case, Mr. Chair. I'm sorry, that's not the case. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll send that on. And those in favor, post so ordered. Then announcements, follow those. Those in favor, post so ordered. And we have... What did I miss? Okay, I missed this one. Missed Biancaria? No, I didn't.
I'm not quite sure, asking questions to ensure that we provide not only a safe environment but the best education. And we have presentations that let us know what the key pieces are that are continuing within our school. But as a school committee member, there are certain things that everybody has for priorities. And asking questions and looking for communications and data and so on provides us with the tools that we need to move forward and have a budget that works in not only us students' favor but in our staff's favor and our community's favor. One of the things I've said for a number of years is that we have a great city and we have a school system that we tweak continuously. And the only way we can properly tweak any system, whether it be a school system or you're making something, you're manufacturing something, or you're working on Chapter 74 courses and you're asking those questions, and it's hands-on and it's the knowledge that we need to have to then make the determination on what will work when the funding comes and goes. And when we work with our legislative delegation, we want to be able to have the answers that they're asking for the questions that they're asking and be able to have those conversations. And it's not always easy. At times, it is difficult. But certainly, when we have our presentations, as we did this evening and in the past, compliments are given and recognition is given. But that does not mean that you don't have the flip side of the point also, that we need to have information to move forward in the right direction. Thank you.
I missed one item here, 4-45. To view and make... And I'll just comment on this too, as in I gave the same speech a few months ago about the administration and our schools and how good they are. But I understand the frustration too that this body can't... Should be able to ask questions, no question about it. But I also understand we can't be sending the message to give questions that... And this might not be the perfect example tonight, but there are other examples most definitely, where we saw send the message that when schools are not safe. And we don't want to send that message. I don't think anybody wants to send that message because we're working too hard. We saw their presentation tonight and things are... And I'll say it again, things are so much better in the last year, so... And it won't go that way. And I think some of the comments made that we don't want to make sure anything gets cut that we saw today, whether it be the Dean of Students or down with the culture and climate, the rep around coordinators, because we are making a difference. And I'm so proud of that and I see it, so it's much appreciated. So... Okay. Okay. So we are on to review and make necessary changes to 2425, Worcester Public School Student Handbook. Make a recommendation and refer to Finance, Operation, Governance. All the others are said on that. Those in favor, post so ordered. Next is a motion to adjourn. And those in favor, post so ordered. We got Drake May.